I'm gonna do a warrant first. Yeah. Can we get the lights? You ready? Okay. Call to order. The Fall Wakefield Town Meeting, 2008. First order of business is to read the reading of the warrant. The warrant was served on, was posted on 10/22/218 at the usual places of public observance. Kevin J. Lopes, 10/22/18. Mr. Mayo, I understand we have some special guests here this evening?
Good to doin'. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the town is aware, we had a, quite a tragedy of a physical nature a few weeks ago where one of the icons in our skyline, the First Baptist Church, was struck by lightning, or allegedly struck by lightning, and burned. And during that action that ensued, I was down at Town Hall, you know, kind of watching, walking around in awe as to how our first responders handled that situation. It was a seamless transaction. They made sure, A, that nobody suffered any injuries, and no one did. They contained that fire to that building and protected the buildings around it. Since then, I have been stopped by a lot of property owners, people who were around that have come in and have commended how great our first responders are, and we know that. And I include police, fire, DPW, building, emergency management, border health, they were all there to help and make sure that our citizens were safe. So Councilor Longo contacted me and said he would love to have our first responders open this town meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask that any of our first responders here, please come up here and stand and turn around and lead us in the pledge. So please, if everyone rise, our first responders, and all come over here.
That's good enough.
Chief Sullivan? You wanna start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And from a grateful community again, thank you very much. Now get back to work. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Article one. See if the town will vote to accept a report of the fiscal year 2018 budget.
That the town vote to accept a report of the fiscal year 2018 budget?
Sir Second? Mr. Mayo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As always in preparing for the annual presentation of the town report, I reflect back upon where we have been and where I hope we, as a community, are all headed. I remain very proud of the work we have done together to plan for our long-term needs, improve infrastructure, add vital social programs, fund the top-quality school system, all the while maintaining an adequate level of reserves. None of the results are ever enough, but I believe that we continue to attack these issues in a strong, methodical manner, setting us up very well for the future. I meet often with managers of our surrounding communities. We all have our issues and services which we need to improve, but more and more, our neighbors are struggling with their financial picture. Many are projecting short- and long-term deficits, more are or have over-written Proposition Two and a Half for operation expenses. We seem to be bucking this trend. That doesn't happen by accident, and we all need to thank the hard work put in by members of the Town Council, Finance Committee, School Committee, our town employees that work above and beyond every day to make Wakefield a better place for all, to live, work, and visit, and especially those of you who come out to town meeting and participate in the process. Our success is a team effort. We have a saying at Town Hall that it's all about the W. A local person told me, when you flip the W over and close it, it turns into a heart. So I would say it's all about the W with heart. And that, as a nutshell, is about what we need to be about here. I see in almost every surrounding community the creeping and beating of the partisan drum. It seems to get played out on social media and destroys what may have once been wonderful friendships. Part of our success in Wakefield has been because of our bipartisanship. I fully realize that many of the issues and events transpiring nationally and internationally are very upsetting, no matter what side you are on. There is an election tomorrow, and people are bitterly divided across the country. As a community, we just had two unfortunate, but very necessary and very uplifting events at the two Emmanuel Houses of Worship. We continue to come together as a community and summon our better angels to do good, to promote the W, the W with heart. This meeting will request the town utilize $3 million in free cash to balance the budget, $30,000 to settle the contract for our clerical union, $106,000 to settle the contract for our DPW union. Both unions deserve, and both members are very hardworking. Over $500,000 will be on the docket for infrastructure improvements, include step one in a very, very exciting redevelopment of our downtown, as well as $500,000 to replenish our very important special education stabilization account. We continue to invest in ourselves. Also, $573,000 or so of the free cash used to balance the budget represents a use of our reserves so we can actually share some of our strong financial position with the taxpayer. The Town Council has approved, and the Finance Committee is recommending, that we do not tax to the full 2.5% this year. The Town Council has voted to limit the tax increase to approximately 2%. Taxes will still increase, but the average homeowner will save about $53 a year in taxes for this fiscal year, and the average business property owner $260, as opposed to a full increase. Over the past few years, we have left approximately $3 million in the hands of the taxpayers instead of taxing to the maximum allowable under Proposition Two and a Half. Again, while other communities around us are asking the taxpayers to pay more through overrides, we are actually giving back. After this town meeting, our free cash number will still be a solid $6 million, the high end of our financial policy, and through expected revenues and careful budgeting, we should end fiscal year 2019 in the area of $8 million in free cash, or 10% of our operating budget. Now, Mr. Moderator, I'm gonna ask Doug Lyons, are you ready, Mr. Lyons?
Mr. Lyons?
To expand upon what our continued investment in education means to our students and the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo, for the opportunity to address town meeting and the community this evening. It's much appreciated. The Wakefield Public Schools continue to thrive due to the ongoing support of the Wakefield community. With the recent release of the 2018 MCAS data, we've learned, we have a lot to celebrate in regard to student growth and achievement at each one of our schools. At Dolbear Elementary, 95% of our students met the Department of Education targets in growth and achievement. At Greenwood Elementary, students in grades three and four exceeded Department of Education targets in math and English Language Arts and achievement. At the Woodville School, 89% of our students exceeded DESE-defined targets. At Galvin Middle School, 61% of our eighth-grade math students scored in the meeting or exceeding performance levels, which we are really pleased about. At Wakefield Memorial High School, students exceeded the target for overall English Language Arts achievement in grade 10, with 94% of our students scoring proficient or advanced on the scaled score level. And this year, we're particularly pleased to report that Walton Elementary School was recognized as a Commissioner's School of Distinction. That is only one of 52 schools across the state to be giving this, given this prestigious honor. The reason this honor was awarded is because of the significant growth and achievement that the students scored this past year, which is saying something with all of the construction and renovation happening at their schools. The teachers and the students should really be commended for their work in that area. Our science, technology, engineering, and arts, and our math, our STEAM offerings, have never been more aligned than they are today. We have new programs and curriculum at elementary, middle, and high school levels. At elementary, we have a new FOS program, which allows students to participate in hands-on, next-generation, standards-based activities that require students to collaborate and solve challenging problems. Students participating in engineering classes at the middle and high schools are required to collaborate and solve real-world problems. In our recent STEM Week activities, students worked in teams to design and create sustainable solutions for communities that have recently been devastated by hurricanes across our country. This included the construction of portable shelters, creating sustainable food sources, as well as opportunities for people to get access to clean water. These activities address technical and adaptive responses to global weather patterns and changes. Our Social Studies Curriculum Coordinator is working with social studies, social studies teachers across the district to review and pilot new social studies programs as part of our curriculum review cycle, with a particular emphasis on civics and civic engagement of our young people. This is something that our community can desperately benefit from, and I know that our students will benefit from being engaged in that way as well. Our students continue to grow as readers and writers, using the workshop model at the elementary levels. Our extracurricular programming in music, theater, art, and athletics continue to be a viable place where students thrive and round out their educational experiences. We have collaborated with the town to cut user fees to make these programs most accessible to our students. Students, teachers, and coaches working in these spaces continue to exceed expectations. In the last two weeks, the WMHS marching band scored a perfect score in the state competition to win the week bef, two weeks ago, and then yesterday, in the New England competition, they came in second overall. So we'd like to congratulate the students for a fine season and the work that they did, along with the parental supports for those programs. With all that there is to celebrate, there's much area for improvement for us. One such area, one of a few areas, but one such area, is our high school facility. Although teachers and administrators are doing all that they can, our NEASC certification may be downgraded from warning to a probationary status due to the state of our physical plant and building at the high school. We will know more in the coming weeks when we receive a final notice from NEASC about our accreditation. We also anticipate hearing from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, who recently did a tour of the high school facility in December, that will weigh in on our statement of interest that we submitted, seeking financial support from the state to address issues with the physical plant at the high school. We will let you know as soon as those, that information come in. An area that has become increasingly difficult to address is the rising costs of special education and special education programming. This includes services in and out of district. Fortunately, we on the school side, School Committee and Finance Subcommittee have been able to forge a collaborative relationship with FinCom to partner and create solutions to address these rising costs. As part of this work, we are proposing Article Eight this evening. Before I read the article, I would like to express my sincere thanks and appreciation to the school and district leaders, teachers, parents, and especially students. I would like to thank our school committee. I would especially like to thank Steve Mayo and town officials, and of course, the citizens of Wakefield for your ongoing support. At this point, I'd like to read Article Eight, Mr. Moderator?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No?
You're new. See, here's what we start with.
Okay.
One. Then we go to two, sometimes three. So if you're, if you're, is that it? You're wrapped up? Because you'll be back up, don't worry.
Good, I'll be back to reading.
Yeah, no, this means you have to stay. You didn't know that part, did you?
Now, before we get to Article Eight, on to the financial aspects of this report.
Yeah, yeah.
Because Wakefield continues to be a community where many wish to work, visit, and live, we have experienced another year of exceptional new growth. Last year's new growth, close to $1.4 million. With more mixed-use developments on the horizon, we project robust new growth over the foreseeable future. The revenue generated from the local option meals and hotel taxes have exceeded Massachusetts' Department of Revenue expectations, with meals taxes and ohel taxes generating close to $970,000 last year. Because of the influx of these new revenues and new growth, we have been able to function with state aid still approximately $1 million less than in fiscal year 2008. Yet during this time, we have increased our reserves. Our free cash balance has been certified by the Department of Revenue as $10,373,208, approximately six times the amount in 2008. Free cash should remain over $6 million for the remainder of the year, while some communities around us are turning to overrides. We are prudently using our reserves while maintaining balances well within our policy level. The value of the, I'll call it the Comprehensive Stabilization Fund, currently stands at over $3 million, double where we were just a few short years ago, and our OPEB, or Other Post-Employment Benefit Balance, is close to $14 million. We have continued our commitment to our infrastructure. Last year, we appropriated over $2 million to capital improvements, as well as $600,000 for new roads and sidewalks. This work, coupled with the advent of the new Galvin School, I am convinced keeps and attracts families to Wakefield, increasing our tax base and Chapter 70 state funding. Although I am pleased with these amounts, I am aware that we still have a long way to go in addressing our capital needs, but again, we continue to address them in a consistent manner. Wakefield continues to enjoy a healthy AAA bond rating through Standard &amp; Poor's, the highest level that is offered to municipalities. This was achieved, according to S&amp;P, due to the town's very strong financial policies and practices under our Financial Management Assessment methodology, indicating financial practices are strong, well-embedded, and likely sustainable. My sincere thanks goes to John McCarthy, our Town Treasurer, Kevin Gill, our Town Accountant, Victor Santinello, our Assessor, and Bond Counselor, Peter Fraser, as well as the Town Council and Finance Committee. This rating puts us in the top 10% of demographically similar municipalities in the state, but more importantly, results in our receiving excellent rates on any bonds, saving us thousands of dollars in interest payments. In the case of the Walton School renovation, our AAA bond rating avoided over $300,000 in interest payments. Just one tick lower, and we would have paid $300,000 more in interest over the term of the loan. It's a great savings to the taxpayer. I wish to thank the department heads, town employees, the superintendent of schools, financed me, and especially the Town Council for their assistance and leadership this past year. So again, in accordance with the requirements of the Wakefield Home Rule Charter, I am extremely pleased to present the fiscal year 2018 report for the town of Wakefield. The report was available, or is available, at the tables out front and is online, or has been online at the town website for two-plus weeks now. I'm happy to report that all town departments managed to stay within or actually expend less than their respective appropriations. Certain departments have also encumbered funds from last year's budget for ongoing projects or bills which carried over to this year. Due to the efforts of department heads and employees, $1.6 million was returned to the town last year. And accordingly, as I mentioned, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts certified our free cash at a little over $10 million. Also, as a town, we held $354,000 as an encumbrance to be expended in this fiscal year. Now for the specific department areas. The general government, the general government portion of the budget includes the Town Council, accounting, IT, treasurer, legal, tax collector, assessor, town clerk, election, registration, and expense, Finance Committee, Conservation Committee, Planning Board, and Board of Appeals. General Government represents 3.7% of our budget, or around $3 million. These departments returned a total of $221,094 to the town, or 7% of their approved operating budgets. Each individual department is broken down in the report. General Government also encumbered $97,632 to be used in fiscal year 19. Protections of persons and property. This area concerns police and fire protection, building departments, seal overweight and measures, animal control officer, and parking clerk. As a group, these budgets represent $14,000 of our overall budget, or $11,295,724. These departments, despite a number of retirements and increased calls due to the state of the economy and the social climate, managed to return $222,000 to the town. The Town Council and I believe the whole community, and I believe the whole community became grateful for all the hard work of our first responders. We pray for their safety every day. Human Services. The Human Services area consists of the Council on Aging, which manages our senior center, the Health Department, the Recreation Department, and the Veterans Department. These departments have returned $30,193 to the town on a budget of $775,442, approximately 4%. Public Works. The Public Works Department, despite their seemingly infinite calls for services and items that I keep sticking into Mr. Stinson's budget to have them get done, returned $7,621 to the town. I applaud their hard work and results offered by, and results offered by this department. DPW also encumbered $235,971 for ongoing capital projects. The Education portion of the budget includes a School Department, Library, and Vocational School. These departments all completed the year within budget and returned $138,367 to the town and carried forward $20,969. Questions on the school items can be directed to Superintendent Lyons. The remainder of the budget line items consist of non-department expenses, particularly in the area of insurance. The town's general insurance, Medicare, workers' compensation, and unemployment accounts all finished the year less than we expected. Again, the biggest return to the town occurred in the area of group health insurance, returning $989,729, as the mix of specific health plans chosen by employees and retirees produced lower costs. An absolutely great job by our HR department as we work with many individuals to fit their lifestyles to the best and most cost-effective plan. As a whole, Wakefield kept the cost of health insurance level-funded over last year. I think these numbers stack up pretty good nationally, so kudos to Amy Bedideno-Fozziati and Karen Dusset for their hard work. I do not anticipate large returns like this again, but I say that every year and they keep making me wrong. For fiscal year 2018, the following amounts were transferred to the reserve fund. $24,333 to the Town Council account for police details and the conversion of streetlights, $14,925 to miscellaneous Town Council for porta-potties. Those were added back into budgets next year. $138,000, $130,000 for outside legal attorney costs. $3,585 for additions to the town's legal library. $15,000 split between election expense and registration. $4,000 for Board of Appeals costs, $4,500 for professional medical expenses. $78,630 to DPW for emergency repairs to the roofs and the electrical system at the Civic Center. $16,897 was returned to the town. I thank you again for the opportunity to address you this evening, Mr. Moderator. This concludes my, concludes my report.
Any questions on the motion to accept the fiscal year report for 2018? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to accept the fiscal year, fiscal year 2018 report is presented by Mr. Mayo. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. For the record, I will read the out-of-town guests. Sherri Dalton, Kathy Cheeks, Patricia Domigan. Did I get that right this time? Okay, thanks. Dan McGrath, Mark Sardella, Dan Schneider, Joe Conway. When'd you move out of town? All right. Bill Renault, Chief Smith. Somebody from the School Department, we'll get to that. Maria Monks-Serrano-Serro, School Department. Mike Fefferling. And Dennis Fazio. Thank you. Article Two. That the town, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to use such free cash as may be in the Treasury or any part thereof in computing the tax rate for fiscal period ending June 30th, 2019, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo?
That the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $3 million in free cash in computing the tax rate for fiscal year 2019?
Thank you.
Thank you. The purpose of this article is to allow $3 million of free cash to be used in setting the fiscal year 2019 tax rate. This amount is necessary to offset the budget to enable the town to be within the allowable tax levy under Prop 2.5. As you may be aware, our submission to the State Department of Revenue reflects conservative use of non-tax levy income in order to be in compliance with Department of Revenue parameters, as well as carefully positioning us in light of any unexpected downturns. This conservative revenue calculation, as well as the very prudent efforts and results of our department heads in the managing of their budgets, has led to a consistent growth in our reserves. As I said before, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts had certified our free cash to be 10-point, close to $10.4 million as of July 1st, the year 2018. After the use of the $3 million to offset this year's budget expenditures, as well as money set for the other articles heard tonight, assuming they all pass, we will have free cash balance of approximately $6.1 million, a comprehensive stabilization account of $3 million, as well as $500,000 in the sped stabilization account. This account, this article reflects the previous will of this body and is part of a long-range strategy adopted by the Town Council and Finance Committee to invest some of our reserves now in order to right-size some wanting areas in our budget, particularly the schools, and we heard about the great results there in Mr. Lyons' presentation. I submit that we're one of the few communities that are providing enhanced services within Proposition Two and a Half, all the while implementing a long-term strategy to increase reserves. Again this year, we are able to keep some of our reserves in you, the taxpayer. Since fiscal year 2013, the Town Council has voted to leave approximately $2.5 million in your hands. In other words, we have not taxed to the maximum allowed under Prop 2.5. This year, based upon our reserves, as well as our economic forecasting, which runs, which runs out through 2027, the Town Council has elected to forego the collecting of $570,000, thereby only increasing the tax levy by approximately 2%. The effect is that the average homeowner will pay $53 a year less in taxes, the average business $262. Taxes will not go down, but the increases will be less than if we had gone the complete 2.5. I'm extremely proud of our ability to provide this relief, but also the fact that we are represented by a Town Council and Finance Committee that supports all our citizens. The Department of Revenue categorizes taxes that aren't levied as excess capacity. So you may see that when you look at our town report, excess capacity. I look at this as a reserve as well, a reserve kept in the people's accounts. It is important to note that all budgets are already approved by this body, therefore the lower taxes to you do not affect services already voted on. And finally, our financial policy is adopted by the Town Council and Finance Committee establishes a goal of maintaining free cash balances at 8% of our operating budget, at a high end of 8%. At the end of this fiscal year, I expect that our free cash position will be in the $8 million range, and again, at the upper end of our budget, miles ahead of where we were just a few years ago. The Town Council recommends favorable action on Article Two.
Mr. Sherman, FinCom.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. We like to pay our bills. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion under Article Two? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use 300, or $3 million in free cash in computing the tax rate for fiscal year 2019. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Three. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $147,442 of the net premium paid to the town upon the sale of its $9 million general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2018 bonds dated August 15th, 2018, to pay the cost of the project being financed by such bonds or notes, or to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project. project, but not yet issued by the town by the same amount, and further supplement each prior vote of the town that authorized the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws. The premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay the project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of the premiums of the applied, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town appropriates $147,442 of the net premium paid to the town upon the sale of its $9,870,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2018 bonds dated August 15th, 2018 to pay costs of the projects being financed by such bonds or notes and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for such project, but not yet issued by the town by the same amount as follows. Amount of premium, $24,542 for the Galvin School, $64,300 for the fire truck, that's the pumper, $54,650 for the ladder truck and $3,950 for public drainage. And further, that each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects is hereby supplemented to provide that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied.
Is there a second? Thank you.
This is another one of our very exciting Articles Three and Four, very exciting bond items for tonight.
You can explain this to everybody in layman's terms?
I think so. I'm gonna try. As the town meeting is aware, the town has issued a number of bonds over the last 10 years. These bonds have allowed us to upgrade our athletic fields and facilities, build the Galvin School, replace aging fire apparatus, repair some long-term drainage areas, as well as refurbish the Walton School. The process that we go by is that after town meeting approves a bond, approves a borrowing, approves a project, your financial team works with bond council to present our creditworthiness to the financial markets. Because we have maintained a AAA bond rating, the highest available for municipalities, we've been blessed by excellent rates. Part of the rating bonding process is that the institutions bidding on a loan may pay a premium to us. So not only are we getting great rates, but people that want to lend to us are saying that we will not only give you a great rate, but we will pay you a premium. So think of that as the bank paying you points when you borrow money. They're paying you points, okay? And our latest borrowing of 9.8 million, consisting of 6 million for Walton, 1.7 million on Galvin, which was the final audit after we went through the SBA final audit, and that did come in under budget, 791,000 for the ladder truck, 650,000 for the fire pumper and 855 for drainage. When we went out to the marketplace, we received a great rate and we received a premium of $147,442. We also received an additional $31,600 on the Walton School, but that amount was already directed, directly applied pursuant to the actual bond approval. So what happens is we have $147,442 of points given to the town, and what this article does is allow us to apply that, those points directly to the projects, and we actually lower the actual amount we borrowed. And ultimately, we pay less interest because we're paying on a smaller amount, a smaller loan. So I view this as a cleanup article, and the town council and finance committee certainly, I think, both recommend favorable action, but Mr. Sherman will speak for them.
I still think that sounds like a kickback. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
We like this one, though.
Any discussion on the motion under Article three? Mr. Mullen, have we, this is still majority, right? Because it's not borrowing, it's a kickback, as Mr. Sherman said. The motion before you is that the town appropriate the amount of $147,442 of the net premium paid to the town upon the sale of its $9,870,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of bonds dated 2018 bonds dated August 15th, 2018 to pay the cost of the project being financed by such bonds of notes and reduce the amount authorized to borrow of such project, but not yet issued by the town by the same amounts as follows with the procedure that follows that. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article four, to see if the town will vote to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed, but which are no longer needed for the purposes of which they were approved. There are unissued amounts, date of approval, previous warrant article, and these are for the Woodville School, water, senior center, infiltration inflow system and the sewer. Mr. Mayo.
That the town hereby votes to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed, but which are no longer needed for the purposes for which they were approved. $642 for the Woodville School, $177,336 for water expenses, $600,000 for the senior center, $147,840 for infiltration inflow removal and $97,680 for sewer expenses, all that are as listed on the dates and warrant articles in the grant.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
As I said, this is our second very interesting bond article tonight, and this is another cleanup article. In this instance, we are looking to remove from our financial statements a number of old approved borrowings that are on our books as authorized but no longer needed. In each instance, the project in question was completed without borrowing the full amount. These approved but not acted upon bonds remain on our books and actually create some unnecessary questions from the regulators. So when we go out on our next bonding project, they ask, well, what about this? You could borrow this money, you could use this, and it may affect our credit rating, although it hasn't in the past, but they would prefer to have it cleaned up. It's kind of like on your own credit report, if you have a bunch of credit cards with high balance, with high allowable balances that you haven't used, it may be a mark against you. So let's clean these and get these off our books. So all this article does is allow us to rescind these old bonds, and by the way, we could never borrow on them anyway because the project is completed, and create a more attractive balance sheet, which, as I said, is a positive effect as we go to bond council on whatever the next project is. Incidentally, the large one on the senior center, the $600,000, we actually received a grant after the project was voted, so we ended up borrowing less. Favorable action is requested here.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee also recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article four?
Charlie McCauley, 32 Lawrence Street. A question. The warrant states a number different than what was given. Got 60, 600.00 or 600,000, not 600,000. Is that a legal problem or is it just a?
No.
I know it's not ever in printing, obviously.
Yeah. The, the.
It's actually correct in the warrant, but it's incorrect in the.
Excuse me, excuse me. You appointed the tellers, you're not doing everything tonight, all right? Whoa.
I just wanted to know whether it'll create a legal problem.
Talk about the trend of autocraticism. Thank you for getting that. No, Charlie, what it is, is the warrant, as long as it gives sort of a four corners of notice, the motion does not have to mimic the warrant, okay? So we can, point well taken, but it doesn't therefore void the action, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Any, any further discussion under the motion under Article four? There being no motion that the town vote to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized to be borrowed, but are no longer needed for the purposes of which they were approved, $642 for the Woodville, $177,336 for water, $600,000 for the senior center, $147,840 for infiltration removal and $97,680 for sewer. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article five, to see if the town will vote to implement collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical Town Hall, AFSCME Council, 93, local 3117 for the period July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, and to provide therefore that the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to carry out the purposes of this article or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical Town Hall, AFSCME Council, 93, local 3117 for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021, and provide therefore that the town supplement the personal service accounts of various departmental budgets by raising and appropriated from the tax levy, excuse me, from free cash, the amount of $26,681 and by the transfer of $1,818 from water receipts to the public works water personal services account, and by the transfer of $1,930 from the sewer receipts to the public works sewer personal services account to the following personal services account. Accounting, $3,241. Building, $2,994. Police, $1,050. Fire, $1,050. Council on Aging, $3,789. Public Works, $1,710. Town Clerk, $3,126. Treasurer, $2,593. Assessors, $1,548. Tax Collector, $2,781. Board of Health, $1,799. Veterans, $1,000. Water, $1,818. Sewer, $1,930. For a total of $30,429.
Is there a second? Mr. Mayo.
Article five embodies raises for the 21 members of our very hard-working and dedicated employees of the clerical union. For the most part, the members of this union are the many faces and voices that the public interacts with when either visiting town hall, the public safety building, senior center or contacting the various departments on the phone. This contract will expire on June 30th, 2021. It contains the same cost of living increases as approved for other unions, some of which were done in the April town meeting, 1.5 percent each six months and a new top step in fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. Also, one position has been upgraded. The total cost is $30,429 with $26,681 from free cash, $1,818 from water and $1,930 from sewer.
Finance Committee approves of this contract and recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under Article five? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield Clerical Town Hall, AFSCME Council, 93, local 3117 for the period July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2012, and provide therefore that the town supplement the personal services account of various department budgets by raising and appropriating from the tax levy the amount of $26,681 and by transfer of $1,0081 from water receipts to the public works water personal services account and by the transfer of $1,930 from the sewer receipts to the public works sewer personnel services, personal services account for the, in the following amounts as set forth in your program. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article six, to see if the town will vote to implement collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield, Massachusetts Laborers District Council, 3, local 381, for the period July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, and to provide therefore that the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to carry out the purposes of this article or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield, Massachusetts Laborers District for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, and to provide therefore that the town supplement the Department of Public Works personal services account by raising and appropriating from free cash the amount of $106,000, by transferring the sum of $20,000 from the water receipts to the public works water personal services account, and by transferring the sum of $20,000 from sewer receipts to the public works sewer personal services account, the total cost of Article six is $146,000.
Second? Thank you. Mr. Mayo.
Article six embodies raises for the 58 members of the DPW union. These are the dedicated employees you see out on the streets during good weather and bad. These are the people who you see hard at work at night or on Christmas Day, keeping us safe and the roads open. It is the hard work of this group that puts the shine on Wakefield. The town council and I are grateful for their commitment to the town. This contract is a one-year contract as we will be consulting with the Collins Center at UMass, Boston School of Public Policy to complete a job description study and classification of the positions throughout the different divisions within the DPW. So we'll be looking at people that work in highway, forestry, water, sewer, buildings, et cetera. Cost of living increases are consistent with other unions as there is a 3 percent increase in fiscal year 19 and with a new top step at 1.5 percent, just like with the clerical that we just passed. We will also add a stipend for the working format of town events of $150, an event as well as increase the annual tool replacement allowance because our mechanics do sometimes break their own tools. This is a fair deal and consistent with the other unions in town. We've used the Collins Center for other clerical and our supervisors' union. We've been very happy with the work of the Collins Center in the past, and we expect a good result here. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee also approves of this contract and asks you to vote favorably. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion under Article six? There being no discussion, the motion before you is that the town votes to implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wakefield and the Wakefield, Massachusetts Laborers District for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, and provide therefore that the town supplement the Department of Public Works personal services account by raising and appropriating from the free cash the amount of $106,000 by transferring the sum of $20,000 from water receipts to the public works water personal services account and by transferring the sum of $20,000 from sewer receipts to the public works sewer personal services account, the total cost of Article six is $146,000. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, before we get to Article seven, I just want to thank the department heads for allowing me to obsess before town meeting as I do, I call you with 100 questions. I specifically want to thank my administrative assistant, Sherri Dalton, for putting up with that obsession for the last few weeks before town meeting and helping me put everything together, so, thank you.
Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from the tax levy or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to implement Phase One, design improvements and upgrades to the downtown right-of-way corridor, including Main Street from Church Street to Nahad Street, Olive Common Street, Albion Street from Main Street to Tuttle Street, Water Street from Main Street to Vernon Street, Lake Ave., Spalding Street and certain areas, certain related areas to see what the town will do it. Mr. Stinson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $331,500 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Stinson.
Purpose of this article is to make improvements to the downtown right-of-way corridor, which includes Main Street from Church Street to Nahad Street, Common Street from Church Street to Main Street, Albion Street from Main Street to Tuttle Street, Water Street from Main Street to Vernon Street, Lake Avenue, Spalding Street and other related areas. This is a, this is Phase One of a Phase Two design program that will result in an $11 million investment in the downtown corridor. The goal of the project is to improve pedestrian access, walkability, bicycle access, circulation, parking, traffic flow, traffic control and signals, streetscape, safety, crosswalk, passage and improvements necessary to comply with regulations that impact this project. Total design portion of the project is approximately $1 million of the total $11 million improvement project. It is planned that the construction portion of this project would be funded through the state's transportation improvement program. Phase One of the design will begin immediately and has an estimated completion date of April of 2019. Some of the work components of Phase One include traffic data collection, survey, road safety audit analysis, public outreach, stakeholder meetings, sidewalk, sidewalk, excuse me, planning, concept development, renderings, partial design, 3D simulation video, mobility analysis, streetscape design and related items for the downtown corridor right-of-way. right-of-way. There is no preconceived plan for the improvements. The first phase of the project will develop the goals and concepts for the downtown corridor, and allow us to get on the State Transportation Improvement Program funding list. A 10 percent investment in the project will provide a considerable investment in the downtown area. We recommend that $331,500 be appropriated for the purpose of this article.
Second? Mr. Stinson.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request that Town Meeting body allow consultant Patricia Darmigan from VHB to make a presentation on the proposed project.
I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. You're up.
Is this on? Thank you very much. My name is Trish Darmigan. I work at the design consulting firm, VHB. I'm here to give a very brief presentation about the vision for the downtown area. As Mr. Stinson had said, that the project objective is to really create a more vibrant downtown. You have a beautiful downtown area now. It needs a little bit of enhancement and actually a refocus from more vehicular-centric, with a lot of cars traveling through the downtown to more of a destination. We would be looking at more a multimodal type of transportation, a lot of cyclists, a lot of pedestrians, to make sure that they enjoy the downtown that you have in Wakefield. One of the things that, that is a vision for Wakefield is to create more of an arts and cultural downtown area, to bring in different venues for that, and to have different areas where people could celebrate the arts. And one of the things that we would be looking for is to take a look at certain areas to make sure that we have spaces that could be used for these types of venues. One of the things definitely is to create a destination for everyone to enjoy, making sure that you have access to all the parks and all the really nice areas, like the lake that you have, that actually connects the lake to the downtown, to the retail areas, to the restaurants, so that people can get back and forth to the destinations that are in the, in the area. One of the things that VHB does, and what we'll be working with DPW and the town on, if this gets approved, is to make sure that the, the project is cost-effective and implementable. One of the things that the town is interested in doing is partnering with the state, MassDOT, and federal resources to make sure that this is eligible for state and construction funding, as Mr. Stinson had mentioned. I'm not going to go through this, but it's a really large area. It's starting at Spalding Street, Main Street, Common, Church Street, Albion Street, all the way down, Main Street all the way down to the junction, and then Water Street to the Shaw's driveway. So it's a, it's a pretty large area that we would be taking a look at. As Mr. Stinson had mentioned, that the project is going to be in two phases. The first stage is to take a look at what's already been done. There's been a number of studies that have been done, in terms of taking a look to see what the strategy is, what, what the vision should be for Wakefield, but nothing really has been put into a plan. You know, there's been no base map, there's been no sketches of what those studies are saying needs to be implemented as, as part of the downtown area. And as I had mentioned, this, the construction is going to be through state and federal means. So the scope that would be included in this first phase would be base mapping. What we're intending to do is to use a drone, and that's going to come back to the public outreach component, but a drone, which is, you know, one of those small, you know what a drone is, to do the base mapping and then supplement that with ground survey. And what we're going to use for that drone is not only to create a surface, a three, an electronic surface that we can do the design for, but also to do 3D animations, so that we could actually develop concepts and then have it fly over the downtown area, so that you can see what the vision that you come up with can be for the downtown. The circuit, the traffic circulation's a little interesting. We would be taking a look at that and see what needs to be done in terms of safety. There are phrases like roadside safety audits that we will be having to do to be eligible for state and federal funding, and that's what we're intending to do, to take a look, to do sidewalks, to make sure that things that are out there now can be improved upon in terms of safety and, and, you know, access and mobility. One of the most important things that we'll be doing is taking a look at what past studies have already been done. There's been a number of studies. MAPC's been doing studies. Northeastern University, the students have done studies, Walk Boston, you know, there's been a number of different agencies that have suggested strategies in, in writing, but no one, like I had mentioned, has put it to paper. And what we'll be doing is taking a look at that. There's going to be a significant amount of community engagement. We have a number of stakeholder meetings, a number of sidewalks, social media, things like that, to really embrace this project, to make sure that a lot of people can be part of the process, to make sure that the concept development is something that the town wants, and not something that a design consultant walks in and tells you what you need. We want to make sure that you feel comfortable with this. I know that you're going through a branding exercise right now to really define what the, the name of, of Wakefield is, what the feel is, and we're going to make sure that all of those exercises that you're going through right now would be incorporated into the, the concept plan. We'll be developing a concept plan with your help. So we're, we're not going to be doing it back in a closet. You know, engineers like to work in the dark and in front of a computer screen. We won't be doing that. And also, we'll be coming up with some streetscape concepts and material options that will give you an idea of what you could use. But again, it's, it's something that will be vetted through the community. I'm just going to flip through some, some slides really quickly. I have like 350. I'm just kidding. I only have like 20 slides, but I just want to give you a feel of some of the things that we were thinking about as this Phase 1 would progress. The outreach examples, this is a, this is a picture of, of a walk audit. There'll be a number of walk audits. There'll be a number of site audits where, you know, we'll be walking down the street and pointing out things that may need to be improved, but also you have some really beautiful features, the lake, the, the parks that you have, that you'd want to refresh but not take away, and that's something that we would be doing. Social media will be used. The town website will provide information and solicit comments from you on the project. Newsletters can be created, just to give people an idea of the status of projects and some of the, the events. One of the things that have been very successful lately is, you know, having displays and people at town events, like Town Meeting, you know, have a board out there. If anyone has any questions that come to Town Meeting, they can, they can ask the consultant, or even farmers markets, you know, that's been very popular. People are always there, so that when you're, when you're at the farmer's market, you can actually understand what the project's all about. Facebook, I think you guys know what Facebook is. Just, this is a newsletter that we've been using very successfully on other projects. Issues and Opportunities Maps, we use that, not only because they're kind of cool to look at, but also to solicit feedback from the community, just so that they can tell, you can tell us what you see as issues and opportunities, what you'd want to see in the final plan. After we do the walk audits, we come back and we brainstorm about what's been seen out on the, the side of the street or in the roadway itself, so that we can actually identify that as an issue or an opportunity. These are just pictures of some of the, the farmer's markets that we've attended, that have been very successful on, on projects in other communities. This is, I'm not going to tell you where it is. So this is a park that we have been in the process of implementing, and these are just some of the concept plans that we've been designing. So some of the studies that have already been done, plus all the survey that we're suggesting as part of this first phase, would be used to start implementing design concept. This is another one where you can see a, a design concept on a plan, but also the cross-sections that show what the scale of things are. You can see here, this is a really tall light fixture that's for vehicular lighting, and the smaller one here is for pedestrians. So, you know, things like that we would be looking at as part of the, the concept development. Just examples of what we would be using, this is called SketchUp, where you would take the existing photo, you would superimpose what the improvements could be, but also what it would mean in terms of what the impacts are to the existing edge of pavement. Are we widening out pavement? What are we doing for sidewalk surfaces? How is that going to blend into, to driveways? We can see what the dimensions of the roadways, the proposed, the existing roadways are, so that, that all of the information that we have would be out there, so that people could understand what we're, we're looking at. This is another project where we had a SketchUp of what could be done in terms of keeping the roadway the same width, but putting in safer crosswalk areas. I'm not sure why the dog's there, but that's okay. Where the sidewalks are, you know, putting in different materials for the sides of the street, so we can actually try on different types of materials to see what fits the best for the town. This is an urban area that we've, we're in the process of, of finishing up in, in Rhode Island, where this is an existing cross-section just of the roadway, and you can see how it just looks better with a new roadway. We're putting in different materials. We're allowing for a wider sidewalk area, so that there could be outside seating and accessibility for all, and, you know, lighting with planters on it to improve the aesthetics of the area. Again, cross-sections can be done very easily, and so that people understand what's needed out there and what is required per state and federal standards. Different palettes of materials, different plantings will be identified, again, just to make sure that the, it fits into the context of the, the community. Also, you know, these are just pictures of before and afters, what, what has been done in other communities for, you know, some of the SketchUp that we've done, and then implementation of it. So you can see that, you know, the things that we'll be creating will be constructed through, as the, the project progresses. I'm almost done, I promise. So this is just another one. What's that? Okay. Where it's an existing picture, and this is proposed, you can see how it just tells the story of what the, the community wanted in terms of improvements. Different gateways will be considered. Street furniture, you know, amenities will be considered, trash receptacles, benches, you know, things, paving details for the sidewalks. You can see how it's all different, and all of these things that you take for granted when you're walking down the street will all be vetted out and, and thought through as part of the design development. More street furnishing, furnishings will be done. Outside seating, you know, if, if there's a palette in terms of the branding, that's just something that we'll be taking a look at. Streetlights, what's, what's, what does Wakefield want to have for streetlights? That will be all vetted through also. Lit bollards for pedestrian lighting will be considered, bike racks, more outside lighting, and also, what do you want for sidewalk materials? You know, there's a lot of different palettes out there. There's a lot of different features that could be considered as part of that. Okay, more pavement. One of the things for the rickery and the, the median that we could be considering is the use of different types of materials, so that people can actually see that it stands out a little bit more, just as a refreshing. A lot of the, the consideration for the streetscape will be landscaping, and the landscaping will be carefully thought through in terms of perennials and low-maintenance shrubberies, and, and street trees, and also trees for the parks. So there'll be a lot of things that will be considered as part of the design development for this first phase. This is just some more pictures of, of different, of perennials and bushes that will be used. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Stinson, are you up on this? Yeah, okay. Actually, I have a question. Does Rick get to fly the drone?
Sure.
Look at him. No, why not? That'd be cool. Okay. Mr. Stinson.
Mr. Sherman.
Sherman, sorry. It began with an S.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 7? Ed.
Good evening. I'm Ed Dombrowski, one of the Town Councilors, 15 Chestnut Street. This is a bold project for our town. This is the result of many years of folks within our town wanting an improved downtown, wanting a revitalized downtown, and this is our opportunity. This is a unique opportunity, in that after years of, of visioning and discussions, we can now have a plan of action. And I think it's important for everyone to understand that the different studies and surveys that went on in years past will be certainly incorporated into and considered by VHB at every opportunity. We'll be extrapolating from all of those studies, all that we can, to make sure that this is the, the strongest, most robust project that it can be for our town. Going into this, there are no preconceived notions about what this project will look like. It is our downtown, and it is our, it is our collective vision in terms of how it'll ultimately look. I think an important aspect to this that I can't underscore enough is the financial consideration here. Tonight, we're asking for three, about approximately $331,000 from, from the town. Ultimately, the full design will be approximately $1 million. The full project cost is estimated to be at about $11 million. The town's portion of that is expected to be $1 million of that 11. So our $1 million investment is expected to yield us a completed project of approximately $11 million. So in terms of a return on investment, certainly that is very attractive, I think, to all of us as taxpayers within our community. Equally important is the impact that a revitalized downtown will have on our community. You saw some of this, the sketches and some of the kind of general concepts of what can be done. I think a lot of consideration needs to go into Main Street itself. When you think about crossing Main Street currently, and we often hear a lot of folks talk about it, I know a lot of older folks are living in Brighton now, for example, they're, they're crossing Main Street more often. We're trying to draw people down to Main Street, and as a result, we have more pedestrian traffic. Well, we don't have, right now, an inviting environment for that. And this, this concept or notion of, of traffic calming is something you often hear about, and if you go to a lot of other communities, they do that. It can be any number of things. You could have islands, you could have more defined crosswalks, any number of ways in which you are slowing down the vehicular traffic. It serves two purposes. One, it's for pedestrian safety. So when you're there crossing the street with, with your family, you know that you're not going to have cars flying by. And two, it also creates an environment whereby vehicles that are passing through, through the town are actually taking notice of the town, and not just flying through. It's a thoroughfare right now, by most estimates. If you think about just outside here, when you leave this evening, think about from the junction all the way down to the lake, or right outside as you're pulling out, that is a very trafficked area. There's no calming, there's no reason to slow down, and it's significant. But there's also opportunity across the street there. We see there is some housing that's going on, but we also see a lot of retail opportunity that is not yet realized. We're excited about the Boys and Girls Club and the enhancements they're going to make, but there's a lot to be done. There's a lot of potential here for our downtown. And those are all considerations for us. There's also the issue, in addition to safety, usability. We have considerations in terms of being able to have more outdoor dining, for example. We have opportunities now with VHB, and I should point out, VHB is a company that we've worked with as a town for about, at least a quarter century now. They're a premier company. They, they know our town well. They understand our traffic. They understand our community, and so they're a great partner with this. But the idea of having more opportunities for, say, bumpouts, they serve the purpose of calming traffic, but also allowing people to have more opportunities to dine outside, to have a fuller experience, a fuller downtown experience, something we don't have currently, but I think we're all looking for. These are all important considerations. Again, we have no preconceived notions about what this is to look like, and I think it's important to point out that there's an ever-evolving learning process that goes into any of these projects. I think, you know, when we think about the, the, the community of participation, that's essential. And I think with each of the projects that we've done as a town, even projects of late, we've come to realize where, where we've done things well-
Mr. Dombrowski, 30 seconds.
Thank you. And where there's room for improvement. So I, I think when we talk about the, the stakeholders here, we're talking about everyone. We're talking about the Main Streets Program, obviously, Friends of Lake Quanapowhat, WCNA, the business groups that we have downtown, the Wakefield, the Greater Wakefield Chamber of Commerce, as we call it, the landlords and the property owners, and most importantly, the residents. So I, I encourage everyone to vote in favor of this. This is an important first step.
Thank you.
It's a concrete first step, and it'll move us forward in the direction we need to go. Thank you.
Mr. McCauley.
Charlie McCauley, 32 Lawrence Street. So far, I have heard cosmetic changes, as opposed to fundamental structural changes. I have a couple of questions. How would these type of changes impact the community as far as businesses in the downtown area, rather than just cosmetic looks? Secondly, I didn't hear anything about catering in any way, shape, or form to the senior citizens of this community, of which unfortunately, at this stage of my life, I'm one. We have a problem with night vision, and I haven't heard anything that addressed anything other than- And I haven't heard anything that addressed anything other than a apparent daytime visual impact on the community. I'm not saying that's bad. That's good. But it seems to me there's something that wasn't brought up in this discussion tonight, and I would really like to hear more.
So, Mr. Stinson, are you going to handle the night vision?
I'm just going to give a quick thing, and maybe Trish will want to add some stuff.
Okay.
First, remember to list everything that will be incorporated in this. We don't have enough time in a day that what's going to be looked at. What we've provided is an outline of the things. But all of those things are going to be looked at. Under our Complete Streets Program and the state's requirement for complete streets, that, all of that stuff gets looked at. Mobility, and you heard mobility, you heard more of a general term, but it's all looked at. And it will all be considered as we go through the process. But it is a process. It takes time to sit down. All those ideas will come up as part of that process. And, Trish, if you want to add.
One of the things that, I apologize, but it was a quick overview. One of the things that we would be looking at in terms of mobility was what's called ADA compliance, which is the Act for, the American Disabilities Act, which means that the accessibility has to be for all users. It's a universe of accessibility. So that includes people who are handicapped and also the elderly and the very young. So it's something that we would be designing too. In terms of night vision and being able to look, to visually see where you're going and to make sure that there's adequate lighting along the streets, that is also something that would be included as part of the design process. So yes, it, street lighting, whether or not it's really high up, like you have right now, which is the vehicular lighting scale or the smaller, more intimate, which is the pedestrian lighting scale, that's something that we would look at as part of design development.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Excuse me. Bob McGlaughlin, 376 Water Street. I guess this would probably go to VHB. One of my questions that I have is if this article is approved and then we go to Phase Two and the town is into this project for a million dollars, what is the percentage of the applicants that actually get the grants? Because it's not guaranteed that we get this grant, is that correct? For the, for the, basically, it would be $10 million.
The project itself is eligible for getting, it's not a grant. It's to make sure that it's eligible for state and federal money.
So what's the, what's the odds of, is that 100% that we're going to actually get the, get the $10 million?
It's pretty high, yeah.
Well, pretty high, is that 100%?
It's not, nothing in life is guaranteed. I don't like to give out guarantees. But if you apply for it and you get approved, then it's, you would get the money as appropriate.
Another question is, the TIP program, is that fully funded for the foreseeable future?
The TIP program runs in five-year intervals, and that's fully funded for the five-year intervals. There's more projects on the TIP funding for the five-year intervals than there is funding, yes, you are correct. But they take a look at projects, they see where they can actually be constructed in terms of the funding that's available, either in the next five years, the five years after that, or the five years after that.
Is there a way to get a wink and a nod from the TIP program before we invest a million dollars in this project?
It's a, it's a democratic program. So you go up there and you actually make a request and they vote on it, so you can't get a wink and a nod. No, you have to go through process.
My next question is, is, when I was on the planning board, starting in 1999, I was the chair of the master, the current master plan that we have. And we did a lot of this stuff. It's already been done.
Awesome.
Well, yeah, and exactly, you know, and that's the point. It's already, a lot of the stuff has already been done.
One of the things, unfortunately, is that regulations change. So, you know, what we're going to do is take a look at all the former studies that have been completed, because there have been a number of them, and see what can still be incorporated into the plan as it meets state and federal standards right now.
And, excuse me for a second, but this is just a general comment. In my opinion, what we're really talking about, this is a real, this is a building owner, the owners of the buildings, the actual people that actually own the property down here, which we have no control over what they do with their buildings to speak of, just so long as they're up to code. And the tenants that they have, that's going to determine what, the viability of our downtown. It always has, and it will always go in the future. We could pave that street with gold. It's not going to do us any good if we don't get the right mix of buildings, you know, the buildings and the tenants down there. You know, I don't want to fill the downtown up with vape shops, for instance. You know, we need, you know, we need, I worked on a shopping mall as an electrician for about, oh, maybe 15 years. And you have to have a mix of stores and shops and services. One of the things that we, you know, we came up, when we were talking on the master plan, was to create a housing component on the upper levels of a lot of those buildings. We have a lot of three-story, three-story buildings. In fact, if we had a single-story building, it probably should be a three-story building, you know? And you have a lot of housing that is incorporated into that whole concept. So you have people living downtown. I lived on Albion Street when we first moved to Wakefield for five years. It was great. We were great downtown. And, you know, and that's one of the things that, you know, we, you know, as we get into the studies, that's what I like to incorporate. Mr. Moderator, how much time have I got?
You've got about two minutes.
Okay. So the parking came up, and that's probably, I wish I had a nickel for every parking study that was done in downtown Wakefield in the vicinity of downtown Wakefield. So I'm not exactly sure how that's going to get solved unless we get, unless we actually go out there and purchase some property. Personally, I'd rather take the million dollars, go out and buy some property, and put a parking lot in. I mean, that's exactly what I'd love to do. And the other thing that I have is the synchronizing of traffic lights. You know, we had a big, huge project in town here. A supermarket came into town, and they put three traffic lights up on Water Street. And those lights were supposed to be synced, and they never, they might have been originally, but they're certainly not now. And, you know, you, you, there's no way you can sail up and down Water Street on that stuff. So this is just one of the considerations as we're going through that could probably, we could, I could solve that without spending a million dollars for a study, I'll be honest with you. And, and one last thing, Greenwood hardly ever comes up when we're talking about our downtown. I mean, I don't live down in Greenwood, but a lot of people do, you know? And if I was incorporating the study, I, you know, I, I would definitely, I would take some of this study money. If it gets, if this gets passed, I would put some of it towards Greenwood. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Lowery, 86 Green Street. I, I'm in favor of doing something along these lines, but I do have some questions. The company VHB, how was this company selected? And I think, Mr. Dombrowski, you mentioned that we've done projects with them before. I'd like to know what other projects we've done with them. And, well, I'll start there.
VHB is our traffic consultant, and they have been for over 25 years. And they've done a number of projects in town. One is the adaptive traffic control system that's up on Montrose and Autobahn Road for those traffic lights. They did the portion that goes from Pleasure Island Road down into the Colonial area, that project. And there's been a whole host of others. We work with them and meet with them every month on traffic issues and projects throughout town.
When you say, Mr. Stinson, when you say they did the project, what, what did they do? They built it?
They did, they did the design and put out the plans and specs together to go out to bid.
Okay. So was this, was this a bid project? Did they have to bid on this, or?
They do not, no.
How come?
Because with construction for whether it be water mains, sewer mains, traffic improvements, those do not have to go out to bid. Those can be awarded, and there's a reason for that. You, they have knowledge that you don't want to repay or pay more for knowledge you already have. So you're leveraging the knowledge they have from working in town with the project.
Thank you. And, hang on, can't read. And so if they, assuming that, I shouldn't assume, but if this goes through and we give them the 300 and whatever it is, $1,000, then we go on to the next step, which is the million dollars, does that also go to VHB?
That would, correct.
Okay, and it's, so this is a really big project, then?
It's a very big project, and once you-
To not have to bid on?
Well, we have a lot of those projects. Our water main projects all go to Camp Dress from McKee. They're our water consultant. They have all the knowledge of the town, and we need that knowledge. We don't want to reinvent the wheel.
I absolutely hear you.
So we want to keep that. So it's important that you utilize a consultant that you have, has done work in town, but you also have a lot of confidence and faith in, which we do.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I just have a couple of questions.
And you are?
What?
You are?
Yes, I am Nick, Nick Major.
And you live where?
I live down on Rosemary.
Okay, what's your address?
I would rather not disclose that.
Well, you have to. Yeah, there's a lot of things I'd rather not do, but giving your address is required here.
All right. What, okay, yeah, I got you. All right, 11 Rosemary Ave.
That wasn't so hard, was it? There you go. Okay, you're up, Nick.
Just don't rob me. My questions are, how long, if, for any duration of time, will areas of the downtown be blocked off per, say, wet paint or ongoing construction? And what effect might this have on businesses in the area?
In construction, that's, and I'm kind of going to give you a general answer. But, because the construction can go in a number of different ways, but we're a long ways from that, too. And that will all be discussed as we go through this process. But construction could happen where we bid that out or through the state, and they do the whole project. That may or may not be a good idea. It would make it quicker, but it would be more disruptive. It could be that the project's construction portion is bid in phases. Maybe you do Albion Street as one piece, and maybe you do the square piece as one piece. And maybe you do Water Street as a piece. So there's a lot of different options there. And it all also depends on what we're actually doing, which we don't have that information yet. In order to get started, you need to do this first phase. You begin to talk about those things. This first phase also puts you on the state transportation list, because you can then apply to go on to that list, okay? So it's, this is an important phase. This, this gets the ball rolling and moving in the right direction.
All right, thank you.
No, I think she was, I think she was up before you.
Hi, Sarah McCauley, 42 Lake Street. I'm just wondering, I know that the woman from VHB spoke a lot about community involvement. And I'm just wondering exactly how much of the community's opinions will be taken into this project. As a member of the Wakefield Commission on Disabilities Issues, I think that that commission should be highly involved in this. People from the community might think, okay, in terms of material, you know, cobblestone might look great downtown, but we need to consider, as Mr. McCauley said earlier, that there are a lot of senior people, there are disabled people. People coming in from out of town need to be able to have access to what we plan for our beautiful downtown to be. And I think that's much more important than the aesthetics.
I'll give a quick answer, and then I'll let Patricia talk about it. But it, it'll be considered real, real hard and heavy, because it has to be. Because remember, a big part of this is mobility, so with that.
Thank you. It's a really good question. So yes, the aesthetics and the materials are very important, but also accessibility. So when a plan is developed, regardless of local standards, state standards, or federal standards, it still has to comply with those standards and regulations and law. One of the things that's, that's law is ADA compliance and making sure that it's accessible for all users. So one of the things that we would look at is the use of materials that can still be navigated regardless of the handicap. That's, that's one of the most important things. So yes, aesthetics are very, it's, it's very important. You, you don't want just a plain paved surface in your downtown area. You want to make sure that it's vibrant and inviting for people to be there. But you also make, you want to make sure that everyone can access it also. So that will be part of the plan.
Yeah, I was just wondering, though, how, I mean, I know you're saying that's going to be part of the plan, but who gets, I'm trying to say, like, members of VHB? Do you have, like, members that are very familiar with ADA? Are they going to be? Okay, so it's community involvement plus the-
So it's community involvement. We hear what your vision is. We want to make sure that you have input into the plan itself. But our engineers, we're all licensed engineers. We would be developing a plan that meets the local, state, and federal regulations. You have, you have to meet them to be eligible for funding also. We can't actually take an exception to that. So we would be developing the plan. We would be presenting it to you. You would give us feedback. We would change it based on the feedback and back and forth to make sure that it's a plan that you guys feel comfortable with, but it also meets state and federal standards.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. DiNocco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul DiNocco, 17 Wyler Street. First of all, I want to support what my fellow councilman, Mr. Dombrowski, said in his opening statement. This is a step in the, to move into the future. I, too, like Mr. McGlaughlin, had been around for a while and was part of the initial master plan. This is much better than that master plan. This is not just ideas and thoughts. This is actual design. This is actual implementation. That's a big step and a big difference than our master plan that most people don't even know exists, okay? Or is collecting dust on the library shelves. So to that point, when Patricia first came into and talked to us back in 2017, she initialized this whole discussion with the transformation of the downtown project. They've taken it to the next level now. And the next level now tells us of how we have to go through with the funding of this project. So the 10% comes into play. So $1 million in total, we're being asked tonight for $331,500, okay? So what will that money do? It's, it helps towards improving the relationship between pedestrians, buildings, and the street and retail districts that can create a sense of vitality that is good for all businesses. The town needs to provide design guidelines that encourage the achieving of this goal. That's what this project is going to do. It's going to bring out those designs, whether it addresses the needs of the elderly, the young, the police, safety, any other component. It's all going to be part of a design that was never done before. We came up with a great economic development piece in 2004. It's antiquated now, okay? It needs new vitality and new blood. This project is being funded tonight, or if it is funded tonight. It is only to get us through the state transportation improvement list. And then from there, it will bring us on to possibly being able to comply with the TIP. I am asking this body to approve this tonight and vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Here, next.
Patrick Bruno, 2 McKenzie Lane. And Patricia, this question's for you. You mentioned that you had just recently completed an urban project in Rhode Island. And how would you characterize Wakefield as an urban project or a suburban project?
Wakefield's a suburban project, but Main Street has businesses that's at a density that's a more urban setting. As was just mentioned, design criteria for this project will be established as the design is developed. So, you know, one of the visions that, that the town needs to think about for Main Street is whether or not you want a more urban, concentrated downtown area or do you want something that's a little bit more spaced out? You have different land uses along, especially Main Street, you know, down here at the school. The businesses are more spread out. You're going to have housing, which is a little bit more suburban. But then if you get to the town hall in that area, it's a little bit more concentrated. So, so it's a mix, and every project is unique and different. That's why all of the examples that I gave you tonight is just a sample of the projects that we work on, and we can bring that experience to this project also.
However, with the 25 years that VHB has been working with Wakefield, Wakefield has come from a suburban community to more of an urban community. So when you discuss a mix of urban and suburban, what do you see as you drive through Wakefield today? And what do you hear from John Kennedy in terms of the projects that are continuing to be built in Wakefield throughout these last half dozen years?
Mr. Kennedy loves Wakefield. He loves to talk about it. So I- So I don't know how to answer that. I think that, you know, one of the things that the town does very well is to address the needs of the community. So, you know, I'm not sure if you want to classify it as an urban or a suburban community. I think that you just want to classify it as a really strong community that you want to, you know, have a vision for your downtown area. I don't really think that I feel comfortable commenting on that.
Well, the only reason I ask is because most of the folks in this room would want to understand where this particular project would lead. Would it be a urban project with five-story buildings? Or would it be a suburban project, more like a village?
Right.
That you see in communities like Stockbridge?
As Mr. Stinson had mentioned, this is to focus on the right-of-way. So it's the roadway and the sidewalk surfaces and everything within the right-of-way of the roadway. It's not going to be focusing on the density of the buildings that are at the back of the sidewalk.
So the biggest concern right now, and just give me a minute here, is that in this downtown, traffic has become overwhelming.
Right.
Parking is extremely tight, and we continue to have more and more apartments added to the downtown mix. So the focus, I believe, in the beginning should be how to balance the mix between the apartments, the parking, and the traffic. And whether that's suburban or urban, you know, everybody in this auditorium can decide for themselves.
Well, one of the things, I think, that in discussing with the town's personnel and folks here in the town, is that there's a lot of people that pass through Main Street. They're commuting, or they're going back and forth to the other communities that's around Wakefield. And one of the visions is to celebrate the local destinations that are in the center of town. You know, you have a lake, it's really hard, if you're a pedestrian or a cyclist, to get from the lake and the sidewalks that are around the lake to any of the retail or the restaurants that are on Main Street. And one of the things that we'll be looking at isn't more regional approach, but more of a local approach to make sure that people can actually get from point A to point B. One of the things to do that is to also take a look at traffic. As the gentleman who was the former planning board member, Chair of Planning Board, had mentioned, there's, there are traffic deficiencies, and there are traffic issues that need to be addressed in order to allow for a more multimodal type of network in the center of town. And that's something that we would definitely be taking a look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You go next.
Hi, Jennifer Calley, twenty-five Sylvan Avenue. Just two questions about scoping, because I saw the street layout. One is regarding, so we're going to be having a new bike path, and it's a point of entry as well as a point of exit for Wakefield. How is that considered in the study? I didn't see it on the map necessarily. Is there some thought as to how that would be integrated?
So any of the planned improvements, including the bike path, will be looked at as part of, as part of the development of Main Street? And to make sure that folks that are on the bike path can get safely up and down Main Street also. So either bike lanes or a separated shared-use path, things like that would be connected to the bike path. Also, any type of park or, you know, if you have, I do a lot, I design a lot of bike paths also. If you have a bike path that ends at a roadway like Main Street, you have to make sure that you have amenities and, you know, places for people to actually sit after they've been on the bike path, or parking for the bike path, or even tools to fix the flat on your tire because you're on the bike path. So, you know, there's things like that, kiosks, you know, gateways, that would be also introduced to connect any of the projects that are already in the planning or the design stages into this project, too. So that's what, when I had mentioned past studies, it would also included any of the planned projects that are surrounding the project.
Okay, and similar to that connected, you were discussing slowing down traffic on Main Street and potentially redirecting. That makes me think of redirecting to some of the outside streets like North Ave.
I don't want to say slowing down.
Okay.
I want to say we're going to take a look at the circulation to see how it actually operates right now.
Okay.
And try to balance it, because it's very, I call it vehicular-centric. So, you know, there's lots of cars, and because of that, they're crowding out all the other modes of transportation. And what we're trying to do is reintroduce those modes of transportation safely. So that's one thing that we'll be taking a look at.
So following on from that, if you were to, if coming out of this study, and I know this is speculation, we were to say North Avenue needs major improvements, but it's not in the scope, what would happen in that case? If you identify a different street that requires improvement or change that's not in the study?
The focus of this would be Main Street. And if there's recommendations for improvements to other adjacent streets, then we would make those recommendations. But the focus right here is, what was on the plan, not just Main Street, I'm just using that because it's a linear corridor. But it, the focus is really on this project.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Brahman Delavobi, eight Cyrus Street. I also had a question. It lends a certain perspective when a project of this magnitude doesn't go out to bid, although I do appreciate working with people who are already familiar. But just to let you know, it does lend a certain feeling that it didn't go out to bid. We're being asked for three hundred and thirty-one thousand. When does the rest of the million dollars come?
If we were able to, remember, our plan, as I mentioned, was to complete Phase One by April of two thousand and nineteen. If that happened and we were in a position, and I can't say right now whether we would be or not, if we were in a position to move forward to Phase Two before town meeting, we would ask for money at the May town meeting. I can't guarantee that, that's a real tight timeframe. If we did not hit that, it would be probably, most likely, would be at the November town meeting of two thousand and nineteen.
So there could be a significant delay if Phase One isn't completed?
Well, it's not significant. It would be a six-month delay from May to November.
Okay, but what I'm getting at is if there is a delay, significant or not, would the TIPS money run out in the meantime?
No, remember, we don't have any tip money yet.
I understand.
This will allow us to get on the tip list. And the tip list moves a lot. And the way it works is, when you get to a point where you can apply for that money, money, they put you on the list, they put a funding amount, that funding amount will go up, could go down, as you move through the whole process. Once you get on there, if you're behind, they will push you out a number of years, so it would delay construction. Does not mean you're not going to get the money. Once they put you in there, now you're on the list, now you show up at every meeting, you sit there, you listen, you may or may not speak, depending on where they are, and at some point, they vote to provide the funding for the construction. This is a big project. I can't see the state not funding this. They funded the Montrose Ave project, which was done a number of years ago, which covered Montrose Ave and Salem Street. The Pleasure Island Road, Autobahn Road piece that VHB worked on was a tip project. All important projects, and if you're hitting all of the right things, and mobility is a big thing right now with the state, they're going to provide that funding for you.
So this is an ongoing fund, it's not just a chunk of money that could run out? Is that correct?
So you know how when a president is going to be elected, he's always saying, transportation funding, transportation funding? It's like infinite, so they always have a budget for transportation improvements throughout the country. And Massachusetts gets appropriated on an annual basis. I don't know what the actual number is, but millions and millions of dollars of transportation funding for projects similar to this one. So it's not a grant that you apply for and then the money's gone after the grant application, after they award the grant. It's repetitive on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. So this seems to be leaning towards the transportation end rather than the design aspect?
No, in order to do the construction piece, you need to do the design piece. You need to put together plans and specifications that allow you to get to that construction phase. And before we can do the plans, the detailed plans and specifications, we need to take all the data that we've had, which is basically data. It's not a plan. I mean, everyone calls it a master plan, but it's thoughts, it's ideas. And then we want to incorporate all the ideas from anyone here who wants to participate. I mean, I have ideas, you may have ideas, Steve may have ideas, we all have ideas. Those all need to be vetted out and what's going to be best for the community. So those would all be looked at. And there'll be a number of public meetings that allow that to happen.
Okay, and who would this team be? And who is going to be the point person, sort of the head honcho, the director of this project?
We do have a complete streets program, which has a number of disciplines in it, including our stormwater manager, our town planner, our DPW director. I think a lot of it would run through that, and those are open meetings. We've already had a number of meetings and actually are looking at about four hundred thousand for some other projects right now. So it would run through that type of project. But VHB would be, would be the point, going out and running those open meetings and what have you, you know, the input sessions.
So who makes the final decisions? That's what I needed to know.
Well, we'll have to come back here for more money to go to the next phase, so town meeting will make the final decision of funding the next phase, okay? But ultimately, you know, a lot of this will go back in front of the town council for their blessing as well.
Okay, I think, I think the problem I'm having with all of this is that it sort of feels like Groundhog Day. That there have been, and it's not just the master plan, which is, you know, old and is collecting dust on the shelves somewhere, which is a tremendous shame, but there have been studies, we have been asked many times to spend money on the experts, the consultants, and the studies, which is fine, I've often voted for those. But our history with those has shown us that not very much has been done with those studies. What can you say that would convince this body tonight that this three hundred thousand dollars and then the remainder of the million dollars, which were not guaranteed, the ten million dollar funding anyway, that anything is going to happen differently this time? What's different about this one than all the other, all the other projects, the studies, that came about with some design ideas, specific ideas of things to do and to look for and implement, and they were not implemented? We have to go on what's been done in the past. So how can you convince us that this time is going to be any different?
First, the studies that were done in the past were not designed. This is the next step. That step never happened. This step that's happening never happened in the past.
And I'm asking why?
I can't tell you. I don't have the answer to that. This takes us to the next step, where we're actually putting pen to paper, and we're going to say, here's the layout, here's the concept, here's what it's going to be, okay? And then you will begin the process of going to, you'll get on the tip list, then we'll go to the twenty-five percent design phase. Once we do that, we go to the seventy-five percent design phase. This is much more advanced, but it's going, in order to get to this point, you need to have all that information. But it's information. There's nothing necessarily concrete in that, that that's what's going to take place. This will make it concrete.
Peg Behringer's marketing report was extremely specific.
But it's a marketing report. The state's not going to give you funding based on those studies.
Okay, that's right, but we've spent money on those already.
And they're not going to be lost.
And have not implemented the concepts in those.
Whoa, 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 one at a time, one at a time.
And have not implemented what's been in, that's the problem I'm having with this.
They aren't implemented because no one brought it to this point. So now we're going to turn around and we're bringing all that data to the next step.
Okay, all right. You also, someone talked about facades of the building. How do you coordinate private property owners with facades of the buildings, upgrading the facades?
I think that's separate from this, it cannot be incorporated. This is for the public right-of-way, okay? The private buildings, that has to come, if that's going to happen, from another area.
So that's separate, then?
That's separate.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
Stacy Constas, twenty-five Wave Avenue. I think this is really interesting, that we have somebody who is an outside entity helping us with best practices think about this, because I suspect if there's one thing everybody in this room could agree on, it's that that corridor that you referenced on the map could use a look and could use some thinking and could use some understanding of how to make that corridor what we all envision Wakefield could be. So I think that's helpful to access this resource that VHB is offering us. And it sounds like all of the other studies and such, the unfortunate Dusty Library studies, will be incorporated into the thinking that's coming forward, along with community input. So, thank you. But my question actually is, can you please help us understand what happens if this article does not pass tonight? And is that a black eye, so to speak, to TIPS? Would TIPS look at that, that it's not funded at town meeting, and consider that for the next phase, for this phase or the next phase?
It's not a black eye, but nothing's going to happen if this doesn't take place. So, I mean, in order to get to beyond the tip, you need this phase. If you don't approve this, we won't be moving to the next phase. It'll just sit there.
So we'll be right back where we are today with the Dusty Library studies and no movement.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. McCauley. Oh, wait, I didn't see you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Robert Mitchell, six Balding Street. I guess I'm going to more express myself. I have, part of me is probably your greatest supporter on this, part of me is quite opposed to it, so I am still wrestling with the decision on this. And I, just briefly, I've been very involved in building probably the first bicycle path in the town at the head of the lake, having the town acquire land at the head of the lake, and having the town retain land in downtown Wakefield. I'm very supportive of the town purchasing more land for all sorts of purposes. Where this, where this gets me a little bit, is I've seen slideshows here before, and I find two or three weeks later, after further research, I have a lot of concerns. I think this is so early in the process, that's not going to be the case. Very enthusiastic to hear we have a professional outfit who would do this. I think that's fantastic, just being in this building, it's a great success. I am concerned, it's a no-bid contract, but that's the way the process is, so that's fine with me. So again, a lot of enthusiasm going for a state grant, very enthusiastic about all that. One of my concerns is, though, is this is going to focus on the right-of-way, but it may neglect other areas in town that need to be funded, although this is a pretty modest amount of money, town funding of a million dollars. Things that it might neglect are things that I've seen done poorly by, I'll just call a spade a spade, by our leadership and the design consultant. I'll just draw it up, a little bit of both, so I'm not pointing fingers, but I just want to say, I've seen things in town done very poorly, and this is my concern. Poorly things are not going to be up there in front of us, but I will say a few. The benches, putting benches in front of a liquor store. The huge telephone poles around town that were supposed to reduce our electricity rates, we had to spend about a million bucks to pull a couple of them down. Street furniture, can't speak for friends of Lake Quonopaw, but I think they're looking at, maybe we've got about the maximum number of benches already on the lake, that if you ride a bicycle or do things, they kind of get in your way. Branding, there's been a lot of opposition in town to the branding. I heard VHB recognized that, fine, but I would say, fine, but just understood that that's the community you're in. The community I'm in pays taxes. The community I'm in pays taxes. A lot of people very opposed to what came out of branding, and branding sounds like it's part of this. So I think that's a legitimate concern. Fixing the roads. I did a three-hour bicycle ride Sunday. Gravel Road, I spoke to the moderator, he's a cyclist. Fantastic. Roads in Wakefield are not good, and they need to be funded more. Let's, maybe we need to maintain things a little bit better before we start doing a bigger, bigger plan. Again, one thing my jaw dropped when leadership in this town just said, "The master plan is collecting dust." Who do I look to, to spend my money to build a master plan with town volunteers, town employees, highly paid professionals? You created this thing in 2003, and I'm hearing my leadership, "It's collecting dust." If that was said in private industry, there'd be an empty chair tomorrow. Focusing on the right of way, great as a cyclist, I think that's terrific. Slowing down vehicular traffic, I think the landscape, the architect, I guess, spoke to that very well, that that's not necessarily the goal, because we have to accommodate flowing traffic through town. And just a general concern, and then I'll sit down, and we might be near the end of this discussion, is the, excuse me, one second. Just a general, just a general comment, I just feel like there's, I didn't coin the term, but I think it speaks appropriately. There's just getting to be too much clutter in downtown. I think less is more.
Thirty seconds.
And I hope that is part of the final design. So, thank you very much.
Mr. McCauley. Oh, okay. Is that your second time? This is going to be your second time? Okay. Been a while.
Jeff Clay's Eden, 10 Eden Street. Just for the record, I'd like to point out that the library does dust its shelves, and if anyone would like to come down and look at the previous plans, you are more than welcome to do so, and we'll show them to you. But my more important point is that a lot of the reason why those previous plans did not go anywhere is that it costs money. It costs money to actually turn ideas into buildable construction plans, and it costs money for this body or some other body to actually construct them. We are at a point tonight where we have an opportunity to do just that, and I urge people to support this article.
Mr. McCauley. Mr. Dombrowski was ahead of you on the second time around. Two minutes. No, you're next. We're going by protocol here, Mr. Dombrowski. You've got two minutes. No, wait, he's going to, yeah, he's up next. He came, believe me. He's been bugging me for about a half an hour now.
So I just wanted to answer a few of the questions that came up. I think they're important questions, and I respect the various viewpoints on this. I think we should perhaps look at this not as phase one, but why don't we call this phase two? Phase one was the studies that were referred to. This is phase two, part one. And this is, what we're talking about tonight is not a study. We're talking about developing engineering plans that we can convert into construction plans. I think that's an important distinction here, because when we're looking at some of the issues that were raised, for example, the roads and the sidewalks, well, the right of way issues that we're talking about would involve putting down, laying down new roads, laying down new sidewalks. So a lot of the concerns that we have relative to the current state of affairs are addressed through this. And I know, in speaking with Mr. Stinson previously, that was part of the allure of this as well, because we need to do these things anyway. So if we have an opportunity for state monies to go towards them, all the better. And this is also not just about aesthetics, although that's important, but it's also about functionality. And when we talk about functionality, mobility is huge to this. And we're very cognizant of the ADA compliance rules, and just in general, the different modes in which people get around. There was also a question relative to buildings and building owners. And no, the town can't control private property, but what we can do is foster an environment for business, and we're doing that. We have the signed bylaw committee, for example. That is looking at ways that we can streamline processes for businesses within the town so that we can have an easier way, make Wakefield easier to do business in. And in so doing, by creating the signed bylaws that we are, revamping them, we're looking with a keen eye towards the aesthetics, because that's so important to that, to try to have this look and feel. And in addition, we have partners like Main Streets. They're offering grants to businesses for low-interest loans to be able to do facade work. So it's part and parcel of what we're doing. The town can't control, but the town can certainly foster and develop, and that's what we're trying to do. And I think this project is a long way in sending the message to business owners in the business community that Wakefield has invested in making our town as perfect as we can make it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. McCauley, two minutes, second time around.
I won't take more than a few seconds. I only have a question, and I think, well, two questions now. Is the mic's working, or am I hearing going bad? Anyways, the question is this. I've been hearing tonight a lot of things that sound very nice, and a lot, most of which I would support. But there was one little nagging thing in the background I keep hearing. A fixed $10 million tip budget. To come up with a number like $10 million, you have to have some concept of what you're doing in the first place. Or you just reached up and grabbed a number out of the air. I'm assuming that once the plans are done, then a number can be attached to it. If that number is greater than the $10 million, is that something that you think TIP would still finance?
Can you answer that, Mr. Stinson?
Yes. First, you go to build a house, and you want to have an idea what it costs. There's a set fee out there of X amount per square foot. That's basically how this is calculated. So there is no preconceived idea. You're taking that square foot cost, and you're coming up with what it's going to be approximately. Remember, we have not submitted a number to the state. So as we go through this process, a more detailed estimate will be created that will then be submitted to the state for the TIP funding. So we haven't even got there yet. But creating that estimate happens as part of this design process.
Well, I'm well aware of that type of a process, having done it many times in the past with the company I worked with. The problem is, we didn't come up with a number fixed out here and then back into it by the plan. And that's what it sounds like to me is being done, because there's no way you can make an estimate on what it would take to do all the work you projected up there with all the amendments, the trees, the planting, stuff like that, without just making a wild ass guess. And I'm asking, what faith do we have in a final number? And bear in mind, whether the money comes out of my right-hand pocket or my left-hand pocket, the town taxes, or the state, or the federal government taxes, it still comes out of my pocket. And I'd like to know what that number would be. And all I'm hearing is a guess.
So the final number is not known and won't be known until the design is completed?
That's my point. Yeah, you're fixing this whole projection.
Okay, okay, okay. One at a time, one at a time. Go ahead.
But it's an approximate number at this point, $10 million. It could be higher, it could be lower. That's just based on the type of project and the length of the project, what an approximate amount of construction money would be.
I hear what you're saying, and I wholly agree with what you just said. But I'm going to relate it to something. This building here started off with an idea. It went through a planning process. Then they came up with a number. Not a number to start with, and then back into it with a design.
We're not backing into it with a design.
Well, that's what it sounds like.
No, no. I'm sorry that it sounds that way. We are starting, taking all the information that we have now, we're starting the design process. The type of project that it is, horizontal construction, it would be $10 million. That's all. It's just, it's just a number.
I rest my case. I've asked my question, you've got an answer? I don't agree with it.
Mr. McGlaughlin, two minutes.
Thank you. Rick, I've got a question on the shelf life of, actually, my other question would should be, the current streetscaping that we have downtown right now. When was, do you have any idea when that was done? Because I know that was a major project, with the street lighting and the sidewalks and the curbens and all that other stuff that went with it. Do you recall when that was done?
Between 1986 and 1988.
Okay. And what is the, are we beyond the shelf life of that right now?
The roadway, definitely.
Well, actually, the sidewalks and the streetlights.
Sidewalks, probably definite. I mean, not in all cases, but there are a lot of issues with the sidewalks. But roadway, sidewalks, definite. The, and there's a whole bunch of things. Remember, we're also trying to look at the future and say, hey, there are all these issues with pedestrians, seniors, the whole group. And we want to incorporate those for the future. So what they did back in 1986 met everything that was needed at the time, but does that meet what is needed today? Probably not.
Are we at a point where we're not in compliance for handicap access for pedestrians going through town, downtown?
I would say there are some of those ramps downtown, and Patricia's looked at them a little more than I have, that do not meet the current code.
The current code, okay. My only comment would be, is for the building owners, the people that actually own the actual structures that make up our downtown, because, I mean, downtown's more than just a street. I would like to see, I'd like to see the building owners and the tenants put a little skin in the game. I mean, if they're asking us to spend a million dollars, I'd like to see some of those buildings down there. Some of them have done very well. The Savings Bank is a perfect example, Farmland's a perfect example, you know, but there's a lot of buildings down there that could really need a lot of work. And I'd like to see, before I'd spend a lot of money on streetscaping, I'd like to get the buildings and the tenants up to speed. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Hold on a minute. Is there any other discussion? No need. All right, the motion before you. Let the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $331,500 to carry out the purpose of this action. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Stinson. Thank you. This is dumb again. Thank you. Thank you. Ah, Article 8. Come on back up here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's like Sesame Street. That's education. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the Special Education Stabilization Fund established under Article VII of the Annual Town Meeting of 2014 in accordance with General Law's Chapter 40, Section, I wrote over it, something B. Or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Lyons.
That the town appropriate from free cash the amount of $500,000 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund established under Article VII of the Annual Town Meeting of September 2014 in accordance with General Law, Chapter 40, Subsection 5B.
Is there a second? Mr. Lyons. You go. Yeah. You got remarks? You don't have to.
I think I covered this in my earlier remarks.
Oh, okay. All right.
I'll add a few more remarks to that. The Finance Committee has looked at this a number of years. The stabilization fund, we voted back in '14, about $300,000, I believe. And the whole idea is that the SPED budget, Special Education Budget for the schools, has a very high volatility. We've had some years where we've had some money left over. We've had a number of years where we've had to spend a lot more than expected. For example, last year, we had to spend quite a bit more than expected just because of the students, a number of students moved into town, a number of reasons. So a couple of years ago, when we did this, we thought, this is good, we'll have a $300,000 reserve that we can tap in case of an unexpected increase in the cost of special education. The problem is, we spent that money in ensuing years and never bothered to replenish the fund and oversight on all of our parts. So the idea this year is to replenish that fund. We want to get up to $500,000. And at the Finance Committee meeting a few weeks ago, one of our members said, "Where did that $500,000 come from?" And it came from me. I'm an actuary, and I looked at the history of the SPED funding and figured out the standard deviation, and I won't go through all the mathematics, but what I determined was $500,000 is where we need to be to cover probably 99% of any SPED overfund, or overbudgeted or cost overrun, is where I'm looking for, a cost overrun to handle that through the reserve fund rather than having a reserve fund transfer or a special town meeting to cover the cost. So basically, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action to get this fund back to where it needs to be, and hopefully down the road, we won't have to spend it, but it'll be there in case we do. Thank you.
Any further discussion under Article 8? Be no discussion. The motion before you is that the town appropriate from free cash the amount of $500,000 to the Special Education Stabilization Fund to establish under Article VII of the Annual Town Meeting 2014 in accordance with General Law's Chapter 40, Section B. Mr. Mullin, this is majority, correct? Yeah, okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 9. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money to provide safety fencing and netting improvements, netting and improvements related to the site disturbance at Walsh Field, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town raise and appropriate from free cash the sum of $200,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Stinson.
Purpose of this article is to improve safety at Walsh Field and Darwin's Tennis Courts. Due to the current setup of the baseball field fencing, location of the tennis courts, and location of Hemlock Road, foul balls from the baseball field will travel into the tennis courts and other areas. This is a safety hazard for both pedestrians and users and motorists. The proposed project will provide a new backstop with an overhang that is closer to home plate. Eight-foot fencing with sports netting on top will be installed on the first and third base sides. The fencing and netting will start at the end of the backstop and continue to approximately 15 feet beyond each dugout. The fencing will travel in front of the dugouts, improving safety for the players. The fencing along Hemlock Road from the Volk School sign at Farm Street and Hemlock Road will be replaced along with the access gates. The warning track area of the baseball field will be reshaped and upgraded on the first and third base sides to allow for the new backstop and fencing. The pavement area behind the backstops will be repaved. And a lot of that work is when you move the backstop and you put in the safety fencing, we need to, it's going to disturb the warning track, the pavement area, all of that stuff. DPW recommends that the town appropriate $200,000 for the purpose of this article.
Mr. Sherman, you up on this?
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on the article.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Bob McGlaughlin, 376 Water Street. Just a little clarification, I just want to be clear about this. Walsh Field, isn't that, only because I went to a forum a couple of years ago for the high, isn't that where the high school is supposed to go?
I don't think that's necessarily true or not at this point. I think that's well farther out a decision on anything like that.
Because my opinion was, after I left that forum, that, because they were having a lot of discussions about where they were going to shift the high school, and, you know, unless I was asleep, I could have sworn they were talking about putting that across the street. That was probably the numero uno place to put it, because where else are they going to put it? You know, we built a new track, probably five or 10 years ago or so, in the back. They're not going to put, I don't think they're going to put it on top of that track. I would really, I don't know what the timing is for the new high school, maybe somebody can help me out here.
somebody can help me out here. I know it's not going to happen next year, but it could happen within five years. Um, you know, I'm wondering if there's a possibility of putting some temporary protection up between, by the way, how many people have been bought, belted off the head over the tennis court? Does anybody know?
Uh, that I couldn't tell you, but there is a safety concern, and do you want one person to get hit?
I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody hurt. What I'm saying is, is I think we could probably put some temporary fencing up or temporary something, but, uh, I personally, I don't think we should spend $200,000, because I, at the end of the day, that's where that high school's going to go. I know it is.
Bill Conley, 83 Elm Street. Uh, I've had 35 years of experience on the tennis courts, and I can tell you it's a real problem. And, uh, everybody that I've talked to that's been involved, from the high schools to the tournaments we run, to the, uh, general public that uses it, recognizes the problem. I, I think the solution that is proposed is quite a bit more than tennis, even though we're very happy with the tennis solution. I don't think we can afford to look to the unknown, the future, and something that's indefinite, to protect the safety of young people and older people like myself. Uh, I know this is supported by the FinCom, by the A.D., we've talked to, we work with them. It's supported by the Wakefield Tennis Association. It's certainly supported by the high school teams, and in my view, very, very necessary to act on this. We support the plan, we've reviewed it, it looks tremendous, great work. Uh, it is an expenditure that is a long time overdue. We've been looking at this for about 15 years, to be honest with you. There's more baseball played there now than ever before. Because of the conditions of the courts, there's more tennis played there successfully, uh, more than ever before. So the opportunities, uh, for someone to be injured are greater, and it truly is a significant miracle that no one, uh, has been hurt, uh, to date. And a lot of people have that question, well, no one's been hurt, why do we do something? It's inexplicable, but we need to act now, sincerely. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Good evening, Mr. Scott, how are you?
Mr. Scott lives at 75 Elm Street. I'm not presently a tennis player, and I'm in a, I should say, I'm in a twilight of a very mediocre tennis career. But I've seen action down there. I've seen all kinds of foul balls go over the back, backstop, which is totally inadequate, there's no overhang. And, uh, we've had a group working on this, uh, behind the scenes. We went to the Selectmen, they have, I understand, sponsored this article. So from the viewpoint of public safety, I am very much in favor of this article, and I hope you people will vote for it. Thank you.
Tony, you want up? Okay. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, motion before you is that the town raise and appropriate from the, from free cash the sum of $200,000 to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Let me stop this here. Article 10. To see if the town will raise and appropriate from the tax levy or transfer from available funds a sufficient sum of money for the purposes of performing a town-wide ortho photo, plantometric, and topical mapping, or to see what the town will do about it. Does this involve a drone too? Just wondering. Mr. Stinson.
That the town raise and appropriate from free cash the sum of $110,000 to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Stinson.
Purpose of this article is to perform an aerial flyover that will provide imaging of the town's infrastructure and features. The information and data gathered will be used in developing and evaluating projects, developing engineering plans, managing town assets such as trees, sidewalks, roadways, et cetera, resolving town infrastructure issues, to name a few. The last aerial flyover was performed around 2002, and due to the technology used at the time, the survey does not provide the necessary accuracy or data that is needed. In many cases, the accuracy is off between two and five feet. Benefits of the new survey include, uh, the following. Provide new aerial photography with new imaging, higher resolutions, and increased accuracy. The accuracy will be between three and six inches. Create new layers such as structures, buildings, pavement, topography, that will be used in the development of future projects. Reduce expensive manual survey and data collection. Reduce the amount of time required to develop plans and specifications. Reduce the time needed to complete projects. It will be used by many departments, not just Public Works, it will be used by planning, it will be used by, um, conservation, it will be used by, um, the Planning Board, the Planner, the Planning Board, um, and other agencies. The DPW recommends that the town appropriate $110,000 for the purpose of this article.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee has volunteered to fly the drones, but it also voted in favor of this article.
Any discussion? There'd be no discussion. Motion before you is that the town appropriate from free cash the sum of $110,000 to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 11. See if the town will vote to authorize the town council to apply for, receive, and expend without further appropriation a grant from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority for the purpose of funding the town's infiltration inflow removal program, and further to appropriate a sufficient sum of money to fund the town's portion of the costs of the program, and to determine whether to raise or appropriate by borrowing or otherwise, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town vote to authorize the town council to apply for, receive, and expend a grant loan from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority in the amount of $1,280,000 for Phase one, 11, I'm sorry, of which 75% or $960,000 represents the grant portion, and 25% or $320,000 represents the loan portion. And further, that $1,280,000 for Phase 12, of which 75% or $960,000 represents the grant portion, and 25% or $320,000 represents the loan portion to the town by the said Massachusetts Water Resources, Resource Authority for use by the town for the town's inflow infiltration removal program. Further, that the town authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the town council to issue bonds and notes of the town to the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority payable over 10 years from the sewer enterprise fund to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Stinson.
Department of Public Works is requesting authorization to apply for, receive, and expend Phase 11 and 12 of a grant loan from the MWRA. The total funding amount for Phase 11 and 12 is $2,560,000, of which 75% or $1,920,000 represents a grant, and 25% or $640,000 is an interest-free loan. The funding will be used to continue the town's inflow infiltration program, which reduces costly, non-sewer flows from entering the sewer system. As mentioned at previous town meetings, the DPW provides, continues to investigate and eliminate inflow infiltration throughout the town for the purpose of reducing the MWRA sewer assessment and making needed repairs to the town sewer system. The town's consultant has estimated that over $10 million of construction improvements is needed throughout town. The DPW recommends favorable action on this article.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee also recommends favorable action.
Discussion. There being no discussion, the motion before you is, as Mr. Stinson just set forth, uh, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? Is anyone opposed? Unanimous, Mr. Mullin? Thank you. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the water surplus reserve account a sufficient sum of money for the water mains at various locations throughout the town, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town transfer from the water surplus reserve account the sum of $100,000 for water mains at various locations throughout town.
Is there a second? Mr. Stinson.
Purpose of this article is to install a water main under the Hopkins Street Bridge. Currently, MassDOT is working on redecking the Hopkins Street Bridge. The town has an opportunity to install a water main under the bridge that will provide water service to the residents on the north side of the bridge. Currently, those residents that are there are served by Redding, um, which actually cost us more than if we were to provide the water ourselves, and, uh, there, and then there are some other benefits. Um, the, uh, we will be able to serve the residents on the north side of the bridge that are proposed, and that's Tarrant Lane, which has been purchased and, um, is going to be redeveloped, so we'll be able to, um, provide service to those residents. Uh, we want to loop our system into Redfield Road to improve system operation. So those are the three issues. We can serve current residents, future residents, and we can loop the system to make it a stronger system. The DPW recommends that the town appropriate $100,000 for the purpose of this article.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee voted to support this article.
Any discussion? The motion under Article 12. There being no discussion, motion before you is that the town transfer from the water surplus reserve the sum of $100,000 for water mains at various locations throughout the town. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the sewer surplus reserve account a sufficient sum of money for the sewer mains at various locations throughout the town, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town transfer from the sewer surplus reserve account the sum of $100,000 for sewer mains at various locations throughout the town.
Is there a second? Mr. Stinson.
Purpose of this article is to replace the sewer main under the Hopkins Street Bridge deck. Currently, MassDOT is working on redecking the Hopkins Street Bridge. The town has an opportunity to replace its sewer main as part of this project. Benefits of the new sewer main include, the main will ensure reliable service to residents on the north side of the bridge, avoids future costly repairs and replacement, the sewer main will support the Tarrant Lane development. Uh, it is recommended that the town appropriate $100,000 for the purpose of this article. I can tell you that, um, the current sewer main was installed, uh, pre-December 1970. Uh, we're still trying to find an exact date, but I do know it was there in December of 1970, and it was probably there longer than that.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Discussion on the motion under Article 13. There being no discussion, motion before you is that the town transfer from the sewer surplus reserve account the sum of $100,000 for sewer mains at various locations throughout the town. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 14. Get out your programs, folks. Uh, this one is to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 175 of the general bylaws entitled Streets and Sidewalks, uh, by striking the words Regulations of the Board of Public Works at 175, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We are hoping that Mr. Lieber will decipher the et cetera. Mr. Lieber.
Thank you, Daniel Lieber, 1 Elm Street. I think a few et ceteras are missing in there given the length of this particular article. We move that the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. The purpose of Article 14 is to redo the Chapter 175 of the general bylaws entitled Streets and Sidewalks, other than the two sections that were handled at the last town meeting that dealt with snow and ice. This actually addresses other terms, such as the word coasting, which after much research is now called sledding. That is now referring to vehicles that in coast, in neutral. And so it updates some of the language. It also makes other changes that are requested from the DPW that Mr. Stinson can address, including the formulas as to how the fees and so forth are assessed to ultimately maintain the roadways when openings are needed.
Mr. Sherman, are you up on this? Okay.
Yeah, the Finance Committee took, uh, took this up, yeah, because of the fees involved, that, that's how we got pulled into this one. And it did, uh, vote in favor, um, of Article 14.
Mr. Stinson, are you coasting on over here to comment? Thank you. Excuse me, then you want to do what? Okay. Hold on.
Yes, I will. I will do that.
Should we do that now before Mr. Stinson gets into it? Yeah. Uh, Mr. Lieber wants to substitute the main motion, so, Dan, you can point to, uh, the part of the article that that would apply to? Would that help us?
It, it will.
Okay.
So the main, the main motion, my, my apologies. I move that the town adopt the bylaw amendments as set forth in Article 14, except the sentence commencing, "The permit application will be required shall be replaced with the following." The permit application will be required to pay an application fee of $25 to the department if the applicant is a utility regulated under General Law's Chapter 164, and otherwise will be required to pay a lifecycle maintenance fee to offset the reduction in service life of the roadway caused by the applicant's utility cut.
Is there a second for the substitute main motion?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stinson, can you comment on the, the whole thing?
Thank you. Um, first of all, one of, one of the things with, uh, utility cuts, it's the worst thing that we can do to a road. Uh, substantially reduces the life expectancy of the roadway, um, by, uh, probably 35% or more. Um, and when you get into a, a newer roadway that, you get a utility cut, it substantially damages, uh, the longevity, um, and you guys all suffer for it. Insurance rates go up when you have poor roads. So we're trying to be creative and have a way to, uh, add funding to our roadway improvements. Uh, one thing, as you know from previous town meetings, uh, we need $2.1 million a year. This year, we were afforded, uh, $1.1 million. Uh, years past, it's been lower than that. We continually fall behind. We cannot keep up with the need that's out there because of the funding that's available. This will help to address that. One of the things I will disagree with is that $25 does not cover the cost of implementing or doing a permit. It is substantially higher than that, so.
Any discussion on the motion under Article 14? Any, that's it, huh? Okay, the motion before you is that the town amend the general bylaws as described in Mr. Lieber's complete substitute motion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Article 15. Article 15. Mr. Lieber, aren't you Article 15?
No, 1516.
Oh. Says on my program, Dan Lieber. Huh? Yeah. Yeah.
That last vote was to accept the amendment that was proposed.
No, it wasn't. We substituted the main motion. That was what we did. We didn't have an amendment. an amendment. Before... Right. And then we accepted a substitute motion. He was the person that moved it, and we got a second for it. Mr. Mullen, am I correct on this? Yeah. No. Because there hadn't been... The full discussion had started, the presentation hadn't finished, and he had read a different motion than would have been in there. So it was a substitute motion. It had not been acted upon or discussed. Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adopting a new Chapter Five as follows. Chapter Five is revolving funds, purchase, expenditure limitations, interest, procedure reports, and Mr. Stinson will explain all this after he presents his motion.
That the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purpose of this article.
Is there a second? Second.
Purpose of this article is to accept legislation that establishes and authorizes revolving funds for use by town departments, committees, agencies, or offices in connection with the operation of programs or activities that generate fees, charges, or other receipts to support all or some of the expenses of those programs or activities. Revolving funds provide that the fees paid will be used for the purpose the fee was collected. Further, it authorizes the expenditure of the fee. The first fund provided for in this article is roadway repair, which is for repairing, restoring, and maintaining public ways. In that previous article you did, that funding that's raised will go into this fund and be used for repairs. It is important to note, there are other revolving funds that will need to be included in this article in the future, so that we comply with Massachusetts' general laws. These other funds are currently being researched, and most of them have probably existed for a number of years. DPW recommends favorable action on this article.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee also recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the motion under fifteen? There being no discussion, a motion before you is that the town vote to amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Article sixteen. To see if the town will vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from such fund in fiscal year 2020. Revolving fund, road repair, $150,000, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Stinson.
That the town vote to establish with respect to each of the following revolving funds, the following limits on the total amount that may be expended from each fund, each such fund in fiscal year 2020, to carry out the purpose of this article. Revolving fund, road repair, the maximum expenditure amount is $150,000.
Mr. Sherman. Oh, yeah. I thought you said a second. Mr. Donaco is in automatic second tonight. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. He just wasn't as loud this time.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Any discussion? Oh, you want to give a little spiel? Okay, go ahead.
Purpose of this article is set the maximum allowance expenditure limit for revolving fund. The first revolving fund limit to be set is for the road repair revolving account. The maximum expenditure limit is $150,000 for fiscal year 2020. The maximum expenditure limit will be authorized each year. It may decrease or increase depending on collections and balances. Other revolving funds will be added to this annual article in the future. DPW recommends favorable action on this article. All three of the articles, we just did two. This is the final piece of that.
Mr. Luca.
Is it possible there could be a mechanism rather than coming back every year to adjust or approve these amounts that would be part of the regular budget, operating budget, that we can vote on at annual town meeting?
Mr. Mullen.
Tom Mullen, I'm the Town Council. The concept is that we will, at each annual town meeting, vote a maximum expenditure for every one of the revolving funds to be ultimately named in this bylaw. So far, we've only got the one, but we're going to add others.
Well, does it have to be as an article versus a line item on the operating budget?
It does.
It does have to be separate?
Yes, under the legislation from 2016 that was referred to earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion regarding the motion under Article sixteen? Motion before you. That the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Seventeen. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by replacing, A, the words Board of Selectmen wherever they may appear with the words Town Council; B, the words Selectmen or Selectmen wherever they may appear with the words Town Counselor or Town Counselors respectively; the word Chairman where it appears the word Chairperson; or D, the word Board wherever it includes the Board of Selectmen with the words Board or Council. Or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Lieber.
Thank you. That the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article.
Is there a second? Mr. Lieber.
The purpose of Article seventeen, this is the second of ten articles before you from the Bylaw Review Committee. We've continued to go through the general bylaws, hope to finish up at the May Town Meeting, April, May Town Meeting of next year. This one is actually a follow-on to the charter change that was sponsored by our Town Council last year that was subsequently voted affirmatively at the polls last April. And this actually goes ahead and completes the change from Board of Selectmen to Town Council throughout all of the bylaws. This is a general omnibus change. The Bylaw Review Committee unanimously supported this article, and we're actually also happy that it goes ahead and de-genderizes some of the language as well.
Any discussion? There being no discussion, the motion before you under Article seventeen is that the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Eighteen. There's no cheering, but perhaps you're new. Eighteen. Pardon?
Lots of et ceteras in eighteen.
Yeah, okay. Article eighteen. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 125 of the general laws entitled Historic Structures by renumbering severability. So, Mr. Lieber will explain to you what this one is all about.
A copy of this is going to be passed out by Mr. Mayo and Tellers. For those of you who don't have it, this is a substitute motion that was actually voted in. It was, unfortunately, a clerical error. The warrant version was a little bit different. So, it's still within the four corners of the actual article itself.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I have reviewed this in my role as moderator, which seems to be diminishing tonight with this crowd. Let me just explain, because this may come up again. It sort of goes to Mr. McCauley's earlier succinct question. The warrant article within the four corners, the motion itself, does not have to mimic that. The idea in the old days was a warrant would be posted all over town, and folks would have some idea about what was going to be voted on within that article. Now, you have to have some idea, okay? I was just recently at the... This might come up again, so I'm just going to give a little spiel here. What happens is, and we just discussed this at the Mass Moderators Convention, you have to have... It's sort of within my discretion, but what you have is, if you have a warrant that says, "We're going to vote for $1 million", somebody can't have a motion for $2 million, okay? You could have 1.2, you could have $800,000. Is that correct, Mr. Mullen? Fair explanation? So, I did look at this, and I don't think that anyone would be unfairly... That there was unfair notice about what this article entails, even though the new motion differs a little bit, you know, not significantly, from the article itself. Does anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay, you got that concept. So, there were others here, which are going to come up later, which I would have ruled out of order, but it's not going to be action. So I just want you to know what that's about, particularly when there's bylaws, borrowing, changes like that, significant stuff. So, even though you're looking at this little red part, it's all pretty close. It's all within the four corners, and it's not like the Bylaw Committee's pulling a fast one, okay? Mr. Lieber, you make... Did you already read your motion yet, or no?
The motion is to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 126 of the general bylaws as presented in the handout given to every member of the body.
Mr. Donaco. Thank you.
Thank you. The purpose of Chapter 126 is a historic delay, historic demolition delay. And what this does is, for any property in town that's deemed historically significant, it imposes a six-month demolition delay when a permit is requested for a demolition of one of those structures. If someone wishes to not have a six-month delay, there is a process by which they can request the delay be waived by the actual historic commission, who will then convene a public hearing and then take a vote as to whether to have that delay imposed or not. Several changes have been updated in Chapter 126, including going ahead and imposing a fee of $250 to cover the cost of advertising for the actual public hearing, should someone choose to avail themselves of this particular component of the bylaw. They're not actually required to pay the fee if they do not wish to have the expedited hearing. So if they want to wait the six months, there's no need for a hearing. They don't need to pay the fee itself. It also goes ahead and authorizes the historic commission, in addition to the building inspector, to be able to enforce the bylaw. And so it makes it much more encompassing and will help protect the structures so that ultimately someone doesn't go ahead and destroy a structure without notice. It also updates some of the other language, and it changes the fines to be $300 a day, should someone completely ignore the bylaw and destroy a structure that is deemed significant from a historical perspective.
Mr. Sherman. Fincom. With a little financial interest here.
So, the Finance Committee had received what you don't see in red at our meeting two or three weeks ago. But during the meeting, it became clear to us that there was this significant section, A, B, and C, was missing. We did not have the exact language. We just knew that there was a section missing. We did vote in favor of the remaining portion, what you see as in black, and approved that. I cannot speak for the entire Finance Committee whether we would have approved or denied the section in red. I would have guessed, and this is only a guess on my part, that we would have approved that. We did have one person who was not comfortable with the fact that it's $300 per day. They felt that was excessive. But we've also been assured that this hasn't happened yet. So, anybody looking at this and thinking $300 a day, that could add up to a lot of money, is absolutely correct. But so far, that hasn't happened. So, Finance Committee, in summary, has given you a partial vote of approval, but not the section in red.
Any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin.
Bob McLaughlin, 376 Water Street. Probably just a couple of comments and maybe one question. Sadly, we just lost a beautiful church. And that was clearly... That was a horrible event. But also horrible is, we've lost a lot of buildings in town. We've lost a lot of buildings. I've been here for about 42 years, and there's been a ton of buildings torn down. And I guess my question is, is the language here is... This is Section B. Is... I don't... And by the way, I'm an electrician that rewires historic buildings. I've been doing it for several years now, decades, actually. I don't know how you faithfully restore a demolished building and get it back to what it was. I think it's impossible. I don't know how you do it, regardless of what the fine is, something. So, I just... I don't understand that sentence, because I don't know how you get it back to where it was after you tear down a historic building. Don't know. Anybody have a question? Answer that?
Yeah, can we answer that, Mr. Lieber? Oh, Mr. Mullen wants to answer this.
The experience of some historic commissions is that they're not always dealing with the demolition of the entire building, but maybe a part. And in that case, you do want the owner to know that he's done something wrong and to have an incentive to reconstruct the damaged part of the building. As for a building that's entirely demolished, I agree. It's an issue. On the other hand, sometimes you do want the whole structure reconstructed as the next best thing to the original. And I would say that the real teeth here is in C, where there's a two-year bar on a building permit if they do take down the building without permission. So the developer has a two-year period when he has to just sit with that land fallow.
So who would be the enforcement agency for this, for these provisions here? Would that be the building inspector?
Building Inspector, yeah.
Building Inspector. Thank you.
Scott McCauley, 32 Walden Road. I just have a quick question, because it says owner of a significant building. And who determines what a significant building is? And is there a list of buildings around town that are considered significant? Because if somebody just applies for a permit, and they get a permit, and they start, and the historic commission comes and says, "No, no, you can't do that," then they're forced into going through this process of paying fees and fines of something they didn't know they were involved in.
Can you answer that, Mr. Lieber?
I'm going to defer that to Ms. Bertrand, who is on the historic commission.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bertrand, Seven Shem Way Circle, with the Wakefield Historical Commission. There... Does it work? Sorry. There is indeed a list of the historic structures. It was established in the 1980s. There are approximately 380-some properties that are on the list. The list is available on our website, historicwakefield.com. Does that answer your question?
So when it says owner of a significant building, that significant building would be one of these that's on that list, and they should already know? Or they would otherwise be informed of that when they apply for the permit at the town hall?
Absolutely.
So when they apply for that permit at the town hall, they'd be informed? So in theory, this wouldn't happen, because they'd be informed that they can't do that without going through the same process?
Right. So they deserve that fine. It's a little comment, Scott, okay?
When a demolition permit is requested, it's requested through the building department, and the building inspector checks the list. And if it's on the list, then the permit will be put in for delay.
Okay. I just want to clarify that there is an actual list that...
Yes.
Okay.
And the list is defined in other parts of Chapter 126 that are not being changed.
Mr. Mitchell.
Real quick question. I know it's getting late. Through you, moderator, are there any town-owned buildings that are on that list? There are. And they would be... Who would be fined? Will we be fined? Will we be fined the $300? I mean, honest question.
Mr. Mullen.
Because there could be a town-owned building that comes up.
Right down your alley.
And that's it. Thank you.
I don't know that the town would be fining itself. I think rather that the building inspector would refuse to issue the building permit, or rather, the demolition permit, unless the town complied with this bylaw.
Any further discussion on the motion before... Motion on Article eighteen. Motion before you that the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Nineteen. Mr. Lieber.
Do you want to read the opening?
Let me see. Let me get it here. I'll give you a little preview. Oh, this one's not bad. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 130 of the general bylaws in "To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 130 of the general bylaws entitled Hunting and Trapping by revising the text of Section 130-2 of Article 2 thereafter entitled Hunting and Firearms." "To read as follows: No person shall hunt or discharge any firearm within the limits of the town unless permission is granted by the chief of police or by his or her designee. This section shall not apply to the lawful defense of life or property, nor to any law enforcement officer acting to discharge his or her duties in the case of using firearms at military exercises or an established rifle range, or to see what the town will do about it." Mr. Lieber.
That the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article.
Mr. Donaco, thank you.
The purpose of Article 19 is really, it's a minor, minor changes to the language in here. And this was, was done after consultation with Chief Smith. It changes some of the commas, as well as degenderizes the language itself. It doesn't change the purpose of the existing bylaw.
Any questions? Discussion? I got a question. Has anybody been doing any trapping in Wakefield lately? That's what I'm wondering.
Only of moderators.
Okay. Oh, Dan, geez, oh, that's too funny. Okay. Walked right into it. Sorry. Okay. There being no, okay, here we go.
46 Valley Street. I do have a question about trapping. I live on Valley Street where the Mill River runs behind our properties, and for many years, there was a man who would get a trapping license to trap muskrats back where it's a little bit more isolated from the road. So, how would this affect somebody who either wanted to trap, because it is different than hunting, or does it protect animals from never being trapped?
It would be subject to the chief of police.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, that's it. How do you do? Did you ever see him get anything?
Yes, many. There, there are a lot of muskrats back there.
Okay.
Angie Sharabat, 30 Stedman Street. So, she did bring up a good, good point. If pest control comes to humanely trap, whatever problem you might have in your yard, we have to go through the chief of police to have that happen?
No, I think this is a discharge of firearms, right? This is, yeah.
Oh, nothing to do with trapping?
Yeah, so, really, that was a Wakefield pest control. They don't come with a gun.
So, the trapping part, we can ignore?
Trapping is not a part of, of this particular update.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Stacy Constance, 25 Waybav. I just had a question, Dan. The language, "This section shall not apply to the lawful defense of life or property," is that new language, or is that already in the bylaw?
Existing language.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion before you that the town amend the general bylaws as described under Article 19 to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 143 of the general bylaws entitled Fingerprint-Based Criminal Records Background Check" by inserting the language that is there, which we're not gonna read. Correct, Mr. Lieber?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
The Bylaw Review Committee unanimously recommends indefinite postponement on this article.
Mr. Donaco, thank you. Any discussion on indefinite postponement?
After further review, after the article, which was slightly different, that was also presented, was further reviewed with town council, the chief of police, town administrator. Additional changes are being, going to be recommended for Chapter 143. Instead of having this body review this particular chapter multiple times for the same section, the proposal is to bring it up once next spring.
And I told you I was gonna rule it out of order, that part too. Okay. So, all in favor of indefinite postponement? All opposed? Motion carries. 21, "To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 147 of the general bylaws entitled Sidewalk Cafes as follows in Chapter 147." This permit, okay, I'm gonna read this one. "This permit contemplates hereby applies only to sidewalks located within the public ways as any other cafe or other use of a budding..." Flip your page. "...property governed by the zoning bylaws." B, in 147, 7.8 sub 1, deleting the words, "The total area of the sidewalk cafe is 100 square feet or more." And C, replacing Section 147-7.8 sub 2 with the following, "To the extent that any cafe occupies any part of the lot adjacent to the sidewalk, it constitutes a use subject to the zoning bylaws for which approval from this building inspector is required, or to see what the town will do about it." Mr. Lieber.
That the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article.
Mr. Donaco.
The purpose of this change is to actually clean up Chapter 147 Sidewalk Cafes, which has by and large been a very successful bylaw to enable us to have sidewalk cafes. As the Bylaw Review Committee reviewed the language, the existing language allows for cafes that are over 100 square feet and less than 100 square feet, provided that the requirements do not allow them to be over 100 square feet, nor less than 100 square feet, which, in, in, in short, is very complicated and impossible to do. So, this cleans up the language and allows the sidewalk cafes to exist, and also clarifies that the use of the property is subject to the zoning bylaws on which the actual parcel sits. So, the sidewalk cafe itself is specific to the, the right-of-way that is part of the public property. So, this allows for the town council to still issue the permits for the use of that public property for a sidewalk cafe. It just cleans up the language.
Any discussion? There be no discussion. The motion before you is to see that the town amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. All in favor? All opposed? 21, or 22?
22.
"To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 148 of the general bylaws entitled Newsracks as follows in A, Section 148-4, B sub paragraph 4, by deleting the term 'dega' from the, from, and replacing it with the word 'deglo,' okay? In B, in Section 148, 5.81, by replacing both references to Section 148B6 with reference to 148-4.1B6. C, 148-5C, replacing three days with three town business days as determined as defined in Section 3, point, Section 7.3D of the Charter. And D, in 148, Section 5C sub 1, by replacing five days with five town business days as that term is defined in Section 7-3 sub D of the Charter, or to see what the town will do about it."
That the town will amend the general bylaws as described to carry out the purposes of this article. The purpose of this particular article is to clean up the language. Their D-GB is most likely a typo for "day glow," just in, in looking at things. And then there are references to sections of the bylaws that didn't exist. The other change here is to actually change from, from three calendar days to three business days for permits and enforcement, so that way, it actually does not impose any, an undue requirement on the actual DPW, which enforces the Newsracks bylaw itself.
Any discussion? Mr. Reed.
Eric Reed, 26 Crescent Street. "In Article 28, we, in Part 3, we say by deleting from Section 7-3D concerning the computation of time the words 'accepting town business days' from the first sentence and deleting the whole of the second sentence, or to see what the town will do about it." In other words...
Whoa, whoa, you're, you're on 28?
Because that would eliminate the term 'business days.' And then where are we with this article?
Do you understand, does, Mr. Carney, can you help us with that? Is that in, within your purview there?
The, the town council perhaps can help us.
Uh, maybe I'll decide who gets to answer it. What's going on here? Really? Mr. Carney, do you understand that que, this would come under your purview if it's 28, right? You're, you're, you're Mr. 28 on this, right? Hello? John? Anyone? Bueller? Okay, yeah, Mr. Reed, don't abandon the mic. Can you explain this here? I mean, I, I'm not in favor of looking ahead, as you know, but if there's going to be some, so you're, you're saying under this article, 28 would be what?
It would eliminate the concept of business days in the charter. And so, then you're referring to something that will not exist in the future, possibly.
Are you familiar with 28? And do you have a comment on that? And then we'll ask Mr. Mullen.
The business days addressed in the charter that went from cal, went from business days to calendar days is very specific, has nothing to do with this.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mullen, you concur with that?
As I understand Article 28, when, when we get to it, we're going to be deciding whether to abolish this whole concept of town business days and just go to calendar days. And if we do that, then we've kind of defeated the purpose of part of Article 22, because Article 22 relies on this concept of town business days as defined in the charter. If we take it out of the charter, then what are we referring to? But the, the Bylaw Committee was dealing with the charter we've got, not the charter we may have later.
Doesn't charter trump, trump bylaw? As you've told me 10 times in the last two weeks?
That's right. And so, if the charter is amended as proposed, and there's no more reference to town business days, then we'd have to come back at some point and change this bylaw again.
So, you're on to something, Mr. Reed, but not right now. Yeah, do you have an amendment for 23? 22, do you have an amendment for 22? Nope. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? On the motion under Article 22? Oh, yeah, you couldn't, you just couldn't resist. Mr. Precision.
Why come back here again on Article 22 if 28 passes? So, do we know, does someone have the written definition of town business days? Is it, Mr. Mullen? Can we insert that definition into Article 22 so that we don't have to come back and revisit this? And we just move the definition of town business days from charter to bylaw?
Andy Bray.
Whoa, 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 hold on a minute. Hold on a minute. We have, we're having a determination here with the...
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Our charter defines a town business day as "A day when the town hall or a facility used for substantially the same purpose is open for normal town business."
And that's in the charter.
So, not Friday afternoon? Just staying on top of things, Steve.
I would like to motion an amendment to Article 22 by inserting the language that Mr. Mullen had just written into the bylaws, Section 148.
Okay, you gotta write that out over there, as you know. So, he talked you, so you're withdrawing your amendment?
Yeah, withdrawing the amendment. I need to get a second.
Okay. Now, you're up, chief.
Hi, Andy Bray, 3 Highland Ave. I'm a member of the Charter Review Committee. And I think that the discussions are relevant. I think the language defining what we mean by town business days in the charter is not impacted by the Article 28. We're not striking the definition of town business days. We're making a change to how it's being used. We're make, we're proposing a change to how it's used in regards to referendums.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carney, one more time. Mr. Reed's, Mr. Reed, what are you gonna say? Oh, Mr. Mitchell, you haven't been up yet on this. Go ahead. You're next. That will be their second time around, although I did ask Mr. Carney just for opinion.
Uh, thank you for that, moderator. Bob Mitchell, 6 Balding. Just two questions through you, moderator, perhaps to Tom Mullen. Are there any other instances in our bylaws or general bylaws where the term "town business day" is used? And if it's true that the charter, or only the charter, defines what a town business day is, I'm confused what the prior speaker said. Because that is up to debate, what is a town business day? Without that charter definition, I think we're gonna get, my concern is we're gonna go circular. And one other follow-up question after Tom responds, and then we should do it. Thank you.
Yeah, to my knowledge, this is the only place where we use the term "town business days" in the bylaws, and the only definition of town business days is in the charter.
How about general bylaws?
I said, this is the only place, in the general bylaws, where we use the term "town business days," and the only definition of that term is in the charter.
Is in the charter. And then, okay, then just one follow-up question. I'm just, I'm still coming up to speed on this, so... When this whole, however we vote on this, this is gonna go to the Attorney General? This entire package, I presume?
That's all right.
Is there going to be, do we have to be concerned that there may be... Could it be interpreted that Wakefield's package has an internal conflict in the package, in its entirety, or as individual articles?
No, because if Article 22 and Article 28 are both successful, Article 28 will not actually come to fruition until sometime after the next town election in the spring, because Article 28 seeks to change the charter, and that requires a two-thirds vote here today, and then that language has to go to the Attorney General for approval, and then it goes on the ballot next spring. Only if it passes all that, does it become a new, an amendment to the charter.
Okay, and, and then, let's assume both articles and, and town elect, town next spring thing approves all three. Then, then this article that we're asked to vote on would be, I would argue, maybe defective?
Well, we could, we could revisit this bylaw at that time. But right now, we, right now, we're dealing with the charter we've got, and it's the charter we're going to have until at least sometime next spring.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I might add, the AG's office does not go through with a fine-tooth comb and look for your inconsistencies. Trust me.
Okay.
We used to call it detention when I had to do it.
Thank you. I may have this motion wrong, but I'd like to propose we close this, close this meeting, bring it back up Thursday, so...
Why don't we finish this one up, okay?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, just a suggestion. Mr. Carney, you wanna help us here?
Mr. Moderator, would it be appropriate to lay this article on the table until we discuss the charter changes at a later date?
Mr. Mullen, I think we can do that, can't we? Can we lay this on the table and come back to it after 28? Yeah, yeah.
I don't move you, Mr. Mullen.
Okay, that's procedural, so you don't have to have it in writing, correct, Mr. Mullen? Always double-checking. All those in favor of laying this on the table, meaning we'll go to due 28 and then see how this all shakes out? That's a legal term. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Good idea, Mr. Carney. Mr. Mitchell, where are you going? I wanna go home. Mr. Mitchell.
Agreed. Forget the exact same, but I'd...
You're going to move that we adjourn until Thursday night at 7 o'clock, same time, same place?
Yes, I move we adjourn this meeting to Thursday night, same time, same place.
I'm helping you with the motion this time, you'll notice.
Thank you, thank you.
Second, all in favor? All opposed? See you again. Second. All in favor? All opposed? See you again.